Alrighty, it's 5:30 and we want to make sure that we start on time. So, good afternoon everyone, great to see you. We'll go ahead and call our school board meeting to order, and we'll start with 1.2 Pledge of Allegiance. And today it will be led virtually by 3rd grade student Matthew Lara from Lancashire Elementary School. So let's welcome Matthew and all stand.
One, two, from Lancashire Elementary. Please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, big F. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seen.
Well done, Matthew. Thank you again and thank you Lancashire Elementary School. We're going to move on to 1.3 Approval of the Agenda.
Moved, second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion or items to be pulled?
Yes, Dr. Wyatt, I'd like to pull item 8.1, which is Board Policy 6020 Revision, the parent involvement policy. And it's actually an interpretation and translation policy. So I'd like to get some more information because it's been questioned about the funding that's being provided for translation and interpretation. So we want to get the correct funding. I'd like to pull that to get more information.
Okay, we'll be pulling 8.1 for further information. Any other items to look at, discuss, or be pulled? Okay, seeing and hearing none, let's go ahead and vote on the agenda as amended. Alright, motion carries. We'll go ahead and move on to 1.4 Inspirational Message by Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina.
Thank you so much. I'm really excited to be here and seeing so many families out in the audience as well as community members. Many years ago, I think back in 2017, we passed a Safe Zone Resolution. And I still believe it's relevant today and I would like the board to look at updating it. But I will read a few things on it just to remind us of the work that we're doing here in the school district in ensuring safety for several individuals in our school district. So let me go ahead and start reading. "Resolution of the Board of Education's Commitment to the Education of All Children and Making All Campuses a Safe Zone for Students and Families." Whereas the San Bernardino City High School District, Board of Education is committed to the success of all students irrespective of their immigration status, ethnicity, race, religion, sexual orientation, ability, sex and gender identity, socioeconomic status or beliefs. And whereas education has played a critical role in furthering acceptance and strengthening our society as well as treating all people with dignity and respect. And whereas with over 30 languages hard spoken in San Bernardino City High School District, schools including English, Spanish, Vietnamese, Cambodian, Filipino, Arabic, Samoan, and others. And whereas the Board of Education embraces the diversity of our students and families and the rich language and cultural assets they bring to our district and strongly support and encourages the participation of all parents and families in our schools. And whereas approximately 74.9% of students in San Bernardino are Latino, Latina descent, 12% African-American, 6.2% white, 1.5% Asian, and 0.4% American Indian or Alaska Native, and 0.4% Pacific Islander, 0.4% Filipino and others, as well as the 85.8% of students qualify for free and reduced lunch. And so this is just an idea. There's several other points in it, but I would like to update it in order to reflect... Because I know that when we had written this one, this was back in 2017, and it was also adding extra language. That's no longer relevant. And so that would be my move. And it's just also, like I said, a reminder that here in the district, we're looking at making sure that we're being inclusive, that we are treating individuals with dignity and respect. And it's a holistic of the child as well as the staff. So I just wanted to say that message. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Appreciate that. We will go ahead and move on to 2.1, or actually 2.0 Special Presentation and Recognitions, and to 2.1 Outstanding Achievement Awards. So the Board is pleased to recognize and honor the San Bernardino Symphony with the Community Partner Award for their continued commitment to the students of the district. The Board of Education is also honored to recognize the students, parents, grandparents, guardians, volunteers, and employees from Cole and Bonny Oll Elementary Schools, Serrano Middle School, and San Andreas High School. Students will be recognized for their hard work toward academic achievement, parents, grandparents, guardians, and volunteers for their school involvement and positive impact on the lives of children. And cite employees both certified and classified for their dedication and commitment to their schools and the students they teach and support.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Now it's time to present the Outstanding Achievement Awards. My name is Maria Garcia and I'm the District's Communications Officer. This evening, the Board of Education will honor students, parents, and staff from Cole Elementary School, Bonny Oll Elementary School, Serrano Prep Middle School, and San Andreas High School. The Board recognizes outstanding students to build self-esteem and honor excellence in academics, athletics, fine arts, citizenship, and most improvement. The Board also recognizes outstanding parents, volunteers, and employees. And beginning this school year, the Board began recognizing an outstanding community partner. All of our outstanding award winners deserve the honor of being recognized here at our board meetings. I ask that our esteemed Board of Education, our Cabinet members, our Administrator in Charge Anna Applegate, please make their way down to the front to congratulate our honorees tonight. As the Board and Cabinet and our Administrator in Charge make their way down, I'd like to tell our audience that all of our school-level honorees are going to receive a certificate of appreciation and certificates from County Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. Our outstanding student award winners will also receive free tickets to the San Bernardino Symphony as well as a district bumper sticker and yard sign. Honorees, when your name is called, would you and your family please come forward to accept your award and have a photo taken with our Board of Education, our Administrator in Charge Anna Applegate, and our Cabinet members, and your principal? Students, please be sure to pick up your yard sign before you leave. But first, I want to introduce a longtime community partner, the San Bernardino Symphony Orchestra, also known as SBSO. With us today are Symphony Executive Director Dr. Anne Verisell, San Bernardino Symphony Orchestra President, Sonera Martin Brown could not join us, and SBSO Board Member Mr. Damon Alexander. Dr. Verisell is also on the Board of Trustees for the San Bernardino Community College District, and Mr. Damon Alexander is a Councilman for the City of San Bernardino's 7th Ward. So we are extra thankful that they could both find time out of their busy schedule to support music in our community and our schools. And that's a nice segue into one of the many ways that the San Bernardino Symphony supports our district. The Music in the Schools Program launched in 1991 to actively encourage participation in school music programs and show students that the symphony is for music lovers of all ages and all walks of life. The program involves school presentations that introduce students to the differing orchestra instruments and a free live symphony performance at the Historic California Theater. During COVID, the symphony partnered with Cal State San Bernardino music students to record fun segments for different instruments that included music and trivia. The videos were used during asynchronous instruction and are still available as a resource for teachers to use at any time. The San Bernardino Symphony Youth Wind Ensemble is one of SBSO's newer educational initiatives. The ensemble provides Inland Empire students from ages 14 to 21, most of whom are SBCUSD students, a nurturing and creative environment to grow their musical talent and self-esteem, culminating in two live concerts per year. Ensemble members are also offered free or discounted symphony tickets. And speaking of free tickets, the symphony also offers every one of our outstanding student award winners free tickets for their entire family to attend an upcoming symphony concert. It's a wonderful opportunity for our students and their families to visit the Historic California Theater and enjoy a night of live music. For its longstanding support of the San Bernardino City Unified School District and our students, the San Bernardino Symphony is certainly worthy of the Outstanding Community Partner Award. Let's give them a round of applause. And at this time, I would like to invite Dr. Anne Verisell to the podium to speak about this great partnership. Let's welcome her.
Thank you. And on behalf of the San Bernardino Symphony Orchestra and my colleagues and I, we would like to sincerely thank the San Bernardino City Unified School District Board of Education for this recognition. At the symphony, our mission of accessible music and music education guides everything we do. And as the region's largest nonprofit arts organization, we bear an ethical responsibility to do all we can to uplift our community through the arts. This work begins with the San Bernardino City USD students. The students that our work impacts, whether or not they ever personally pick up an instrument, will develop a more pronounced cultural literacy through attending our concerts and participating in our educational opportunities. They'll build pride of place through the recognition that they reside in a city and attend a school district that values the arts. They'll expand their worldview by experiencing multiple genres of music and learning that just as people can be different and equally beautiful, so can music. And the many who do pursue music as a career will see themselves on our stage as we have mindfully grown to be one of the most diverse professional orchestras in the nation. Just a few weeks ago in February, we hosted over 1,000 district students, students who sat riveted on the edge of their seats as we performed Shostakovich's Fifth Symphony. Can you imagine? This does not happen without both the symphony and the district working in partnership to ensure the field trip had significant educational and cultural value. I truly wish you could have been there to see them. These brilliant young people represent our region's future and we are blessed to be a part of a community that provides a caring, student-centered village to each and everyone. So again, we thank you for this recognition and we promise to continue working in close partnership with the district because we know it makes a positive difference for our students today and well into the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Anne Verisell, and to the entire Symphony Board and Orchestra members. I ask all of our San Bernardino Symphony representatives to please join the Board and Cabinet for the official plaque presentation and photo. The plaque is very special because it was made specifically for this occasion by the students at Bing Wong Elementary School. So let's give those hard-working students at Bing Wong a round of applause. Thank you. Let's hear it one more time for our wonderful symphony partners. And now it's time for our Outstanding Student, Parent, and Employee Awards. We're starting with Cole Elementary School and Principal Tamika Casey. Please join us at the front by walking down the ramp where you would normally see balloons. We ask our honorees to do the same when your name is called. After pictures, our honorees will exit using the opposite side. So let's start with 6th grader Maximilian Sue. Maximilian is a student in Clinton Parsons class. Maximilian plays the trumpet in the school band. He serves as a Penguin Ambassador, and don't tell anyone, but he's also the school mascot. He's an excellent scholar, engaged and focused on learning. He is proud of his ability to make people happy and being the son of Miranda Martinez and Touch Sue because they inspire him by the way they live to be like them. Maximilian wants to attend Harvard University and become a pro skater or a soccer player. Let's hear it for Maximilian. And if Maximilian's parents are here, we invite you to please join us for this photo. Thank you. Big smile, Maximilian. Congratulations. Our next student is a 3rd grader in Nicole Harris's class, Riddy Rum. Riddy has worked so hard this year, excelling in both math and reading. She writes stories that she shares with the class. She is tenacious in her pursuit for excellence and perseveres through any issues that come her way. She is a leader in her cooperative learning groups. Riddy wants to own her own hairstyling business. And thank you to Riddy's parents, Lorene Chandana and Ritsum and Ratash Ram for raising such an amazing young lady. Let's give them a round of applause. Congratulations to Riddy Ram and her family. Next is our Outstanding Parent Award winner Cecilia Alcala. Cecilia is an active parent who participates in the English Learner Advisory Committee and school workshops. She attends Family Avid Night, Family Movie Night, and is one of Mrs. Casey's dance partners on Friday mornings. She speaks out in meetings advocating not only for her son but also for all of the scholars at Cole Elementary. Cecilia has her child Benjamin's foremost interests at heart by being present, helpful, and actively encouraging him to do his best in school. Let's hear it one more time for Cecilia Alcala, our Outstanding Parent Award winner. Congratulations Cecilia and her family. And now it's time to recognize recreational aide Rosa De Leon. Rosa is our outstanding classified employee. She is an amazing member of the Cole family. She ensures that students are safe physically and emotionally. She holds all students to high expectations to be respectful, responsible, and safe. She doesn't just tell them, she shows them. She is a leader and meets with her team to ensure that Cole scholars are cared for and supervised on a daily basis. Although she has four children of her own, it's like she has 450 more. Let's hear it for Rosa De Leon. Rosa, if your family is here with you, we invite them to come on down. Thank you, Rosa, for making hope happen. And now Cole Counselor Margarita Elizondo is an outstanding certified employee. Margarita has a passion for counseling that is reflected in her work. She does an outstanding job of addressing and supporting all the needs of Cole students, parents, and staff. She is always multitasking and often very busy, but always manages to provide service with a smile and a positive attitude. It is truly a pleasure to honor and work with her. Words cannot adequately express how much Margarita means to the entire Cole Elementary team. Let's hear it for Margarita one more time. Is your family here to join you? And that is all of our honorees from Cole Elementary. Let's hear it for the Penguins. And now it's time to give a big welcome to Bonny Oll Elementary School and Principal Adrian Ortega. Please join me in recognizing Lori Burke Sims, a 3rd grader in James Tetrault's class. Lori Burke is receiving this award for her outstanding performance in reading, writing, and mathematics. She loves reading vocabulary, writing, and going to the library is one of her favorite activities. She also loves art and would like to one day own an art store. She is also considering becoming a doctor or a nurse. Lori Burke's mother, Catherine Mallard, also deserves a big round of applause for raising a wonderful little girl. And would her proud mother please also join us? Congratulations to this amazing young lady. And now our next honoree is David Infante, a 2nd grader in- And now our next honoree is David Infante, a second grader in Maricela Huerta's dual-language immersion class. David excels in both English and Spanish literacy, as well as being an outstanding mathematician. When asked about his favorite part of school, David said he loves learning math and enjoys lunchtime because it has the longest recess. He would like to be a firefighter so he can climb a ladder, put out fires, and rescue people. I'm sure that David's parents, Christiana Manas C. Infante and Luis Infante, are very proud and we invite them to come forward. Congratulations David. And now we're going to welcome Outstanding Parent Award winner Alma Vazquez Morales. Alma is very active in all parent committees at Bonny Oul Elementary. From the schoolsite council, English Learner Advisory Committee, and parent teacher organization, she is a big supporter of Bonny Oul. She is also a big supporter of the dual-language immersion program and she is willing to help out wherever she can. She just recently was hired by the Parent Engagement Center. Congratulations to one of our newest employees. And if her family is here, we also invite them to join her for the photo. Thank you Alma for making hope happen. And now Secretary Norma Samora is our outstanding classified employee. Norma is a team player and always willing to listen to suggestions and implement them. She is optimistic and you can tell that she enjoys what she does. Norma shares her ideas and takes the initiative. She goes above and beyond each and every day. She is ready to help students and staff whenever there is a need. She's a great listener and supports everyone at Bonny Oul however she can. Norma is a model for those that she trains and she is committed and passionate about the work that she does. Congratulations Norma. And if Norma has friends or family here, we invite them to come forward now. Thank you Norma for your service. And now mild-moderate special day class teacher Wendy Brown Jensen is our outstanding certified employee. Wendy is an exceptional teacher who works hard every day to support the students in her mild-to-moderate special day class. She is a problem solver and approaches each situation with a positive attitude. She is kind and loving while simultaneously firm and holding expectations for academic and behavior. She has a very calm demeanor which is reflected in her classroom and her work with families and students. Let's hear it for Wendy Brown Jensen one more time. Please join me in another round of applause for all the Bonny Oul Bulldogs. And now I invite Erin C. Freeman, the principal of Serrano Middle School, to join the board up front. Congratulations to eighth grader Christopher Rendon. When Chris was nominated by teacher Monica Betancourt... When Chris was nominated by teacher Monica Betancourt, everyone immediately agreed without hesitation. Not only has Chris made leaps academically and acted as a peer expert, he is truly an amazing young man. He is a bright star who leaves everyone smiling and he has added so much joy to Serrano Middle School. Chris would like to work with animals, especially horses, on a big farm. I'm sure that his parents, Noe de Jesus Rendon and Viviana Cruz, are very proud and we invite them to please come forward. Way to go Christopher. And up next is seventh grader Donovan Nguyen. He was nominated by the Tiger Team. Donovan not only excels, but he's remarkable in all aspects of daily student life. He currently maintains straight A's, models champion cougar behavior, and exudes kindness and respect. He's well-liked by his peers and staff. He wants to attend college and eventually have a job that is fun and makes a lot of money, don't we all? I also want to recognize his mother Lucy Nguyen for raising an outstanding young man. Oh, he had a very important game and he could not miss it, so we'll make sure that he receives his certificate, his symphony tickets, and a big round of applause. And now Antonet Rivas is our outstanding parent. Antonet has been part of Serrano and its music program for the past seven years. Serrano has had the privilege of having four fantastic Rivas musicians and Antonet has volunteered and donated in one capacity or another over those many years. Antonet holds her children to high standards while also giving them the love and support they need to not only be successful in school but most importantly in life. And she sets the example for her children through her generous and relentless spirit. Antonet, you deserve another round of applause. And if her family is here, please come forward. Congratulations to Antonet Rivas. And now attendance technician Diane Witten is our next honoree. Okay, we're going to go ahead and read her write-up even though she may not be here. "She's a true asset to the Serrano office team and the school as a whole. She pitches in wherever and with whatever needs to be done without complaining or expecting anything in return. She has built positive relationships with all of Serrano's educational partners, which is evident by her daily interactions and positive passion." On many occasions, Serrano and district staff have remarked on Diane's kindness, her warmth, and the high standards with which she executes her job responsibilities every day. Let's hear it for Diane. And now Kelly O'Grady is our outstanding certified employee. Kelly is a seventh grade history teacher and a team leader. She provides targeted guidance, encouragement, support, and interventions to students so they see and feel their small successes, which is the very necessary hard work that most often equals positive long-term behavioral and academic change. Kelly has the beautiful balance of holding students accountable, celebrating successes, and having lots of fun. Kelly is a cherished asset to the Serrano community. Congratulations to Kelly and everyone at Serrano honored tonight. Yes, would her family or her friends please come forward to join us for the photo? So Kelly's being joined by her family, both former, now retired district employees. Congratulations to Kelly and her family. And also congratulations to all of our Serrano honorees. And now it's time to welcome our San Andreas High School Quakes. Would Principal Dory Stratton please join us up front? Congratulations to senior Alicia Gomez Ortiz, who was nominated by Roberta Figueroa and the CTE team. Alicia is an excellent student and she has earned As in almost every class at San Andreas High School. She is the co-president of the Career Club and helps to run various career events on campus. She is dedicated and extremely reliable. Alicia is working to be a health science pathway completer and hopes to pursue a career in healthcare and behavioral science. Her parents, Macrina Ortiz and Silvestre Gomez, must be so proud and they're already up front here to celebrate. And while we don't want to take the spotlight away from Alicia Gomez Ortiz, we also want to mention that San Andreas High School recently earned two gold-certified pathways from the Link Learning Alliance. Congratulations to Alicia. And now will outstanding student and senior Tawon Rungaroon join us? Tawon was nominated by Jade Smith and the CTE business team. Tawon receives good grades and volunteers for extracurricular activities. He recently participated in the AgTech internship where he presented ideas about AgTech innovations to UCR professors. Tawon has many career options because he is a CTE business pathway completer and plans to become an electrician apprentice after graduation. Let's also honor Tawon's father, Santisuk Rungaroon, for supporting his son. Congratulations. Someone making their way down for a photo? Congratulations Tawon. And up next is our outstanding parent Alba Casali. Alba is a cheerleader for the moderate-severe program at San Andreas High School. She attends conferences, assists with setting up events for the business and technology pathway, serves on the schoolsite council, attends school board meetings, and served on our Link Learning Gold Accreditation Panel. She never hesitates to change her schedule to ensure that her son David is available to participate in the many activities that make the pathway accessible and successful. She is a true gift to San Andreas. Let's give her a round of applause. Do we have anyone else who wants to join Alba? We're pleased to honor Secretary III Gabriela Gabi Nieto. Gabi goes above and beyond to ensure that the school runs smoothly on a daily basis. Gabi is part of the leadership team and helps to build a positive culture among the Gabi is part of the leadership team and helps to build a positive culture among the school staff. She always ensures that teachers have coverage to attend trainings, committee meetings, and collaboration time. Gabi has a very strong work ethic. She always follows through and checks back in with staff to ensure that the job is not just completed, but is done with true fidelity. Let's hear it for Gabi Nieto. Congratulations. And now, for MTSS Teacher on Assignment, Jade Smith. Jade is our final outstanding award winner. Jade oversees the CTE department and is in charge of the Climate and Culture Team, School Site Council, and the Single Plan for Student Achievement. She has helped build our Business Pathway and has driven our school to PBIS Gold. She leads our Saturday School and Summer School Programs. Her drive, determination, and work ethic is truly contagious. Everyone wants to be on Jade's team because they know that she gets stuff done. Congratulations, Jade Smith. And those are the outstanding achievement award winners from San Andreas High School. Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you to all of our honorees for making hope happen in the San Bernardino City Unified School District. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education and Cabinet. You may retake your seats. And a special thank you to 5th District San Bernardino County Supervisor Joe Baca Jr. and the San Bernardino Symphony Orchestra for their support of this evening's honorees. Audience, please give them a warm applause one more time. And this now concludes our outstanding award presentations. Have a good evening.
Alrighty, folks, and congratulations again to all our amazing students, staff, our parents, and definitely all our families out there. Job well done. Definitely proud of all of you. We're gonna move on to 2.2 Resolution and Recognition of Cesar Chavez, and it'll be read by Ms. Marion Aviles Grande.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Whereas Caesar E. Chavez, I should say Cesar, E. Chavez, was a heroic figure of the 20th century who inspired millions into action for economic justice, civil rights, and political empowerment. And whereas the son of migrant farmworkers, Cesar E. Chavez learned about the oppression of field laborers firsthand and founded the United Farm Workers of America in 1962 to help educate his fellow farmworkers to understand their rights to a safe workplace and a just wage. And whereas Cesar E. Chavez developed and adhered to principles of nonviolence in his crusade for peace and justice after studying civic action and the works of Gandhi and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas Cesar E. Chavez and his followers dedicated themselves to the education of migrant workers and their children through the establishment of better schools, fighting to empower farmworkers through voter registration and teaching community members how to organize themselves to effectively represent their interests with government, school, and financial institutions. And whereas, the Board of Education recognized the contributions made by Cesar E. Chavez and named a middle school in honor of this great man. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby recognizes the many contributions and accomplishments of Cesar E. Chavez and encourages all district schools to conduct appropriate activities and observation of his birthday on March 31st.
Vote.
Second.
Didn't vote in a properly second. Let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. We'll move on to 3.0 Public Comments, and then 3.1 Receive Public Comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject-matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Virtual public comments will be taken after in-person comments. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. We will start with our first speaker, and it will be Ms. Christina Marquez. Welcome.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Board members, and Cabinet. I am Christina M. Marquez, and I'm a teacher in this district. I teach at Fairfax Elementary School, which is probably the smallest school in the district, and I teach 5th grade. My comments tonight are about the Learning Center. I'm very happy to say that our Learning Center is finally up and running, and I'm so happy that I have two very competent tutors that are working with my students, the upper grade. Their names are Dean Batorf and Terrence Hewitt, and they've done a marvelous job when they come to pick up my students. My students are always ready to go and learn something new. Unfortunately, we have a slight problem. Whenever we have a shortage of subs, which we do, excuse me, guest teachers, these two gentlemen are often pulled out of the Learning Center to cover a class because teachers are at an MTSS, an IEP, having data talks, or they may be the ELF, or they're in on a meeting for PLC Coaching, Common Assessments, they have conferences that they go to, and services that we need to attend, off-campus trainings. And there are many times that unfortunately, we don't have enough guest teachers employed in this district to cover those classes so that they're not pulled out. On top of that, we also have, the teachers sometimes are out with illness, jury duty, and we're a favorite of the court system because we get paid. People are offered personal necessity, catastrophic leave, bereavement, and then the most current one, they got snowed in up at the top of the mountain. I'm here today to ask that you consider finding a way to entice more guest teachers to work within this district, whether it's a stipend, benefits of some kind, something to get quality guest teachers here in our district, teachers that can hold their own in a classroom and not, at the end of the day, say, "Oh, I can't do this. I'd rather go to another, you know, I also sub over at this city or that city." So we need to get quality guest teachers to come in so that we can continue with going to our MTSS meetings, which are important, or the IEP meetings, which are also important. Many things that we do through the district of training, there was even times when we've gone out for trainings and then got called back because there was no sub to go into our classroom. So it's something for the Cabinet and the Board to think about, and personnel to dust off that safety deposit box, and let's get some money out there to entice these quality guest teachers to come to our district. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Marquez. Alrighty, our next public speaker is Keisha Van. Come on up.
Good evening, Board President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Board members, and the Cabinet. My name is Keisha Van, and I am the Administrator of Young Women's Empowerment Foundation. We are a social, emotional, academic enrichment, and positive behavior interruption program. We service, or we did service, Pacific High School, San Gregorio High School, Double Aho Middle School, and Cajon High School. An overview of the scope of work that we've done is student education, willing your future through education, bullying, cultural awareness, student advocacy, mental health and wellness education, life skills, study and techniques, budgeting, time management, job readiness, and the list goes on. Some of you may have known about the program because it's been in existence for over 17 years now. Tonight, I am here with some of the girls that were in the program to share the disappointment on behalf of these young women here tonight because they have been flooding my phone, calling me, emailing me, and after they found out that there would no longer be a weekly program and that they would not be able to graduate from the program as many of their peers did, which included opportunities such as receiving service sashes, senior kits, celebrations, and scholarships based on the decision that was made. Some of the events that we did throughout the years were included but not limited to visits to San Bernardino Valley College, an enrollment pipeline that provides direct access to the president. We've done prepared crafts and adopted senior citizen centers. We've attended schools across the nation, well, some of the girls have graduated and extended their education to schools across the nation at HBCUs, Cal States, and at Valley College as well. We've had conferences such as human trafficking, My Sister's Keeper, sexual assault awareness, and college preparedness. We teach them life skills, culinary arts. We've had book clubs, medical paths, self-care, the Divine Nine Access. We sponsor trips at no cost to the girls to the museum, to the Museum of Illusions in Hollywood, the Walk of Fame. We've gone to the Raceway. We've done cultural movies. We've gone to the golf club. We've done galas, and we've also done a pool party and a tea and etiquette as well for the girls. Some of the progress we've done in the schools is we also keep up with their grades with progress reports quarterly, and we check their attendance, and we provide scholarships for all of our girls who have at least a 2.0 GPA or above. Tonight, I have some of the girls with us, and I just wanted to give them a little bit of testimony about being in the program. Some of them have graduated, gone on to college. Some of them are still in high school, and they are very upset because they want to graduate and receive their sashes. And we also have one of our teachers, Ms. Vega from San G, that's also gonna support us as well, so I'll give everybody a couple of minutes to do a little testimony. Okay, and we'll start off with Naomi.
Hello, my name is Naomi Guzman. I'm currently a sophomore at Cal State San Bernardino. I was in the program for two years. And just going along with what she was saying, you know, it's not just about the life skills, but what really stuck out to me was that it was a way to teach you how to decompress because we know that there's a lot of things, you know, going on that stresses out, school, and I think it's important to be able to deal with those things, that way you can continue to be successful because you have to be able to do it, right? But you also have to be able to take that break and then be able to move forward. So I think it was just a way to teach us that, you know, it's okay to have fun, but you also have to have your priorities in order, and I think that helps us, you know, be more successful together.
Hello, my bad. Hello, my name is Kazmir Middleton. It's nice to see you guys all again. I was in the program in 2019, my senior year, and I did graduate, and I won, I was awarded the scholarship as well. I would say the program, just as far as like the knowledge, it was just like a time where you could just decompress and just go in there and just have like girls' time, be able to just reflect on all the current events, how we were feeling, just little team-building activities. So it was just a good program just to have inside the school, just because you don't really have that in like some of the other clubs where it's just women and just being able to break down and build each other back up, and I feel like the program really is needed, and thank you.
Welcome back.
Good to see you.
Thank you, it's good to see you as well.
By the way, she's a former student board member.
I was a former student board member as well, so I sat with you guys.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tanya Guzman. I think that it's really important that we have this club because it really brings a really good support group. It was really nice getting to meet with like-minded young ladies, that way we can all improve together, and it wasn't like my sister mentioned previously, it's not just about academics, but we also learn things in life as well. And we were able to take those as we grow. I graduated class of 2022, and I've been able to maintain contact with other of my fellow club members, and I was able to graduate with a sash, and we got a lot of cool things, and they also offer the scholarships. And so that's a really, it just provides a really good foundation for us to continue in our academic endeavors and life as well. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Aliana, and I want to say that YDB was important because it was a program for females that helped us and stuff, and we always had special guests that would just give us advice and stuff, and then like, it was just a good, you know, program for females, and it was self-empowerment, and it helped us with independence, and it helped us with a lot, like, you know, we could do a lot of stuff.
She's being shy, but Aliana is actually one of our graduates too, and she is a braider. She has her own business, and she does hair for a living now, so congratulations.
Good evening, my name is Arjane Daniels, and I've been in this program since I was 11 years old. I came out here when I was 10. I'm from Dallas, Texas, and things are run way different out here than Texas, so coming out here was a big difference, and you have a lot of freedom in Texas. I came out here and I was like, "Oh no, we don't like that." But I came and I became this woman because of her. I became a young lady, a proper young lady. I know how to speak to you because of her. I know how to lift my head up when things are hard and be strong in moments because of her. I know, I know, it's so important to know who you are as a woman, know your heart, know your mind, know your mental state, because when you go far in life, you're gonna need that mentality to know, "I'm a strong woman, and I do not take no for an answer." So if any way, and I know there's a way, because there's always a way, if any way you can make this program happen, it is Women's History Month, so hopefully, I'm hoping you can make it happen. So hopefully, I'm hoping you can make it happen. I don't mean to take up too much of your time. Thank you.
I also wanted to say that Ajenee is, um, she has been in the program since the sixth grade, but she's a senior this year. So it's really, really a big deal for her. She's waited for this moment to be able to graduate, to be able to get her sash and to be able to participate in all the activities that she's seen happen along, you know, the years of being in the program from sixth grade to twelfth grade is just amazing. So she's definitely been there to see the growth and we've seen the growth in her as well. So I'm so proud of her.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Vega. I'm a program specialist at San Gregorio High School. And, um, I, um, come here in support of, um, Young Women's Empowerment because I've borne witness of the five years that I've been at San G, the, the difference they make in the lives of the young women who passed through my program as well. And so, um, and some of, we, we share some students in common. And, um, so this past year has been different because the students who formerly had lunchtime or sometimes they would, you know, do extracurricular activities with Young Women's Empowerment didn't have access to that this year. And, um, and so I, I know there's a piece that's missing for them. And so, um, when in the past, you know, when they would share the things that they did and I would go into their classroom at times, um, you know, I would see and hear about the guest speakers, the, the bonding that they did, the, the navigating of personal challenges that they went through. And so it, it, I, I know how deeply important it is to the young women um, that, that participate in that program and, and it was absent this year. So, um, it, you know, if, if there's a way, if there's a means to, to bring it back, it, it, it is of tremendous value. Um, the, you know, the students who have come through my classroom, you know, I get to celebrate and say, woo, they got a scholarship, you know, which adds to my data. I'm like, hey, you know? Um, and, um, but I just, I just know that Ms. Keisha is a true and, you know, like mentorship is in her heart, you know? It's not just the times that she's on campus. It is, you know, beyond the school day and beyond graduation as, you know, Kazmir is here to testify. You know, it goes, it goes years beyond and, and, you know, has, has a true impact for our community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Simone and I'm a facilitator with Young Women's Empowerment. And I just want to speak on the program as far as just the connections that I'm able to make with the girls that I work with. And just the time that we get to share and you just meet all different kind of girls and they get to kind of, like the girls were saying, like decompress and just talk to me about stuff that they might not be able to talk to other adults or feel comfortable. So it was just like a, a place that we can come and just all support each other. So I definitely think that it's important to have Young Women's Empowerment in the schools. And I've probably been doing it for like maybe the last five years. And it's also had an impact on me because I really enjoy working with them and, you know, coming to see them if they want to join again. So I definitely think that it's something that we should have back in the schools.
Basically, um, you know, again, we just want to drive home that the importance of having this program in the community. A lot of, not a, a lot of, but all of our guest speakers have become mentors to our girls. And we've had guest speakers from life coaches to social workers, police officers, hairdressers, um, doctors, lawyers, um, the list goes on. We've had culinary classes and different things like that. And our motto is empowered women empower women. And that's what we're trying to do. And so we just hope that you take it into consideration to bring the program back into the schools. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ladies. Looks like, um, can you wait one second, please? We have a couple of questions for you, starting with, uh, board member, Ms. Chahuski.
Evening and thank you for being here, ladies. You did a fabulous job, um, speaking to us tonight. I appreciate that. Um, uh, Kazmir, it's good to see you, Ms. Former board member. Um, Curious, what are you doing now? And what was your path since, because since you've been here on the board?
Hello, hi. Yes, I'm currently at RCC. I ended up being a transfer student from Eureka up at College of the Red, Redwoods. Uh, it's good being back home in the city, being back seeing a board meeting and I miss the feeling. It was cool. I missed you guys. So it was really nice seeing you guys this evening. And, you know, just figuring out my next move. Just, just turned twenty-one, modeling, doing fashion shows, LA Fashion Week. So it's just a lot going on. So thank you, guys.
Congratulations on that. Um, I, I believe, question for you guys. I, I think we, was this a tabled item previously? Is there, can we re-agendize it to bring it back or?
Ms. Applegate was giving me some information, so I'll let her answer.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, Dr. Rodriguez had mentioned that the RFP will be open soon. We don't know if it was just a site issue that that was pulled because I know that there have been approvals at other schools. So we can have them submit during the RFP process. And that you can speak to a little bit more when that will open.
Yeah, I'll get with you, Nicole, a little bit later to talk through the RFP process for CAPS for our after-school program. And so, um, you're encouraged to apply for that. It opens in April. Um, and then the, uh, agreement would be for, um, multiple schools and for a longer duration. So we encourage you to apply for that.
Yes, thank you for your time tonight. We appreciate you coming to speak on your behalf.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chahuski.
Kazmir Singh, but is she good? We're good. Everybody's good.
All right, Ms. Abayos.
I have a question as well.
Let's still have two more lights on. Sorry about that.
And, and it's okay. The question's more, um, I guess for us internally. Um, but, but I did want to say thank you for coming out and speaking, um, before us. Actually, I do have a couple of questions. So, so one question, maybe you said it at the beginning. Are you currently this year, um, in the district or not at all?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not this year.
Okay.
This is the first year too that we have not been in the district.
Okay, got it. And then I guess for us, the question that I have, do we have any, um, clubs that are, you guys are all women's club?
Yes.
Do we have any other clubs in the district that's like an all-women's club? And, and the reason why I ask is if, if, if we do, I haven't heard of any.
Yeah, I have not heard of any.
That's why I'm asking. If we do, it may not be enough that we have of. And I think it is really important just as, um, girls, as, as we go into grow into becoming, you know, women, young ladies and into women, it is really important. We, we face different challenges than our, um, fellow males do. We all have different challenges. Um, our, our males have challenges, but we, we just have different ones.
Right.
And a lot of times, um, you know, when you said earlier, they come in and they, they talk to you, um, they share with you, you know, the things that they're going through in the day. That's also really important because we often don't get that. Um, our students don't get that opportunity with the people that are supposed to be there, which are our counselors. Maybe our school psychologists. I mean, who else? It's usually teachers that they end up connecting or groups like yours. Um, the people that we think are supposed to be checking in with our students, which are counselors, they're not. And we know that. We know that. I know that. And it's very unfortunate. Um, so instead of getting rid of, of, of programs like these, I think, um, we ought to really consider, um, bringing in more of it. Um, so yeah, if you can just please get back to us in, in terms of how many, um, actually, uh, clubs we have serving our, our, our young girls.
I, I would like to add to that though, um, also with the program. As you can see, we have one, two, we have about four girls that have graduated from the program. One thing about Young Women's Empowerment, like I said, young women, women empower women. That's what we do. And so once you're a part of Young Women's Empowerment Foundation, you're always a part of it. So these are girls that I keep in touch with. I didn't just pick up the phone and say, hey, I need you. I talk to them on a regular basis. How are you doing in school? What's going on at home? How was your holidays? We have a group text. So we all keep in touch with one another on a regular basis. So it was nothing for me to pick up the phone and call them and say, hey, I need you to come and speak about your, um, experience with the program. So.
Thank you, Ms. Abayos. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Definitely. Thank you for sharing, um, your successes and just having the fact that you're back, um, and, um, showing that you're doing so many good things and coming back to the community here back in San Bernardino. I, I, I do want to ask, um, and I don't know if this is more like towards the district, the reasons, you know, what's going on with this is specific. Because I know that, um, Ms. Ms. Chahuski mentioned to have like a board discussion. We don't necessarily need to have a board discussion because we have so many programs out there. But we would, I would like to get a, maybe an update in, um, bringing that to the board and finding out what are the reasons? Or, or maybe it's just the, the application process, um, didn't come out or so forth. That way I have a little bit more of insight. And I know one of, one of the students mentioned Adventist. I wasn't sure. Maybe that's, I heard it correctly. So then, uh, is, is, um, religion and faith, um, practiced within the, the, um, is that part of the curriculum?
No, it's not a part of the curriculum.
Oh, okay. Okay. Just checking with that. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Ms. Alexander.
And to first, um, congratulate all of you for just coming up here and sharing your story. Um, just wanted to ask the board though for clarification, how long has it been since Young Women's Empowerment has been active versus the break? Because I did hear Ajenee say that she's graduating this year. So I was just wondering, um, you know, can we take that into consideration in terms of the request?
Absolutely. We, we are familiar with this program. It's been in our schools. Um, I submitted, I submitted some information to Mrs. Applegate and to, um, so that she can respond further if she needs to. But we encourage this program. Um, I'll call you tomorrow, Mrs. Vega.
It would be me.
And, oh, and you.
Yeah.
So she'll get, we'll get into contact and then I already sent you an email so that we can get moving on it. Okay?
All righty. Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Vice President Tillman.
The young lady does hear. What's your name again? Aliana, what's your last name? Crawford? Yeah, I think my daughter was your teacher. She told me, she sent me a text. That's my girl. She was in my class. But, um, just really, the program didn't move forward and was tabled because of the time, um, Dr. Rogers was a board member and it was during the election that someone questioned whether or not it was a conflict of interest. The question's totally gone away now because Dr. Rogers is no longer a board member. So I don't see a problem with, um, bringing it back because at the time it was tabled as a technicality. So we could re-agendize it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Abayos, one more and then we'll move on.
So really quickly, um, Ms. Alexander brought a, an excellent point. Um, and I know you guys are all going to look into it, but, um, what is it that, um, I'm sorry, remind me of your name?
Me?
Ajenee. What, what is it that she would be missing out on, um, because the program this year is no longer, you know, part, part of, part of us? Is, is it just like the sashal? Is it like, what is it exactly?
It's actually more than that. It's kind of, if you think about it, it's kind of like a family. It's me growing right before my, right before I graduate because I feel like I still have a lot of growing to do. And that program has helped me a lot with that. And it's not just, it's not just about growing too. It's also about, you know, my scholarships, the scholarship that everyone else has been getting and I wanted to get that too. I, I merge for success. I, I run for it. So any opportunity that I ever have, I'm going to always take. And this isn't, is a great opportunity that has been presented to me. And it's a lot that I'd just be, be missing out on. And also be just becoming a woman, getting more opportunities too. Because this program does offer a lot of opportunities and connections.
But so I guess the reason why I'm asking the question is because would there be, um, something that we can offer her, um, in terms of, like I said, maybe order her the sashal or whatever it is that she would have gotten? Um, I don't know what that all is, but, but that way she doesn't, because I mean, she, she, it's, she's been in the program since sixth, you said sixth grade?
Yes.
And it kind of, it's a bummer, you know? So, so if we can, it's just something that I'm throwing out there. Thank you.
And folks, you know, on public comments, we are only to ask questions, not engage in a lengthy conversation. I know it's a positive conversation, but I just want to make sure I remind the board of that. Ms. Chahuski.
My question is, is it possible to agendize this for the next board meeting? Or do they have to go through the RFP process again since it was a tabled motion?
They have to go through the RFP process.
It, it was a tabled motion from this school year. So can't we bring it off the table and re-vote on it? Because it wasn't, it wasn't voted down. It was tabled.
I believe there's also legal opinion. So that's why I don't want to say too many comments, but I know there was.
I haven't received an update.
Right. So that's why, again, that's why we're not supposed to have a conversation right now.
So my question is, is can we have the, my question is, can we have it agendized so we can do all of that? That we need to, that we might need to do to bring it back?
I'll have to talk with Executive Cabinet on that one. All righty. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. All right. Our next public speaker will be Barbara Passacek. Welcome.
Good evening, President Wyatt, members of the board and cabinet. My name is Barbara Passacek and I'm the vice president for the San Bernardino Teachers Association. And as educators, we understand the significant impact that the recent blizzard conditions uh, in the surrounding mountain communities are having on the mental and emotional well-being of our colleagues. The stress and anxiety of not knowing when or how they will be able to return or leave home or access basic necessities is overwhelming. We are pleased that the district and SPTA are collaborating to focus on the well-being of our colleagues and their families in the recovery efforts. And we'll continue to work with the appropriate agencies and organizations to ensure that our colleagues in these affected areas are not forgotten and that they receive the necessary support and assistance to recover from this catastrophe. As a union, we stand in solidarity with our colleagues and will do everything in our power to support them during this challenging time. We appreciate the opportunity to address the board and cabinet on these, on this critical issue and hope that together we can work towards a swift and effective recovery for all those affected. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Passacek. All right. Next public speaker will be Phil Ugalde. Welcome.
All right. Good evening. Um, well, uh, I have been an educator for twenty years, uh, fifteen of those years in San Bernardino City Unified School District and, uh, ten of those years at Indian Springs High School, um, of which was in the news just recently. My son grew up in San Bernardino City Unified School District and graduated from Indian Springs High School. And I can say with assurance that I know the climate at Indian Springs High School and have the ability to speak on that climate. Uh, regretfully, I am here today to shed light on an ongoing problem at Indian Springs High School, being a former teacher from that school. Uh, Indian Springs has been in the news lately for the response to a peaceful student-led protest surrounding the actions of a teacher on that campus. Um, from what I can gather from the several students and parents that have reached out to me, the protest was the effect of years of top-down neglect and apathy towards brutal tactics employed by campus security and namely, a vice principal on that campus, Mr. Rosario. From evidence that I will present, well, that I would like to present, and I'm glad you don't let me show videos since we have children in the audience, that it might be disturbing to see how students are treated on this campus. Um, but the evidence that I would like to present, and this is video evidence, the tactics employed when breaking up fights at Indian Springs High School and dealing with non-compliant students is accepted either by site staff and subsequently, San Bernardino City Unified School District. Or it is the situation that we have a rogue vice principal, Mr. Rosario, that has taken it upon himself to brutalize children and an apathetic and incompetent administrator that has failed to attend to an ongoing and growing problem of brutality. Um, I alerted you, uh, Dr. Wyatt, the, the San Bernardino City Unified School District Board. Um, you CC'd Mrs. Applegate and Dr. Funches. I sent that video to you, uh, back in December when this, uh, when I would say the first video recorded incident happened. Uh, you did reply to me that it would be investigated. Um, in the video that I showed you, you can see Mr. Rosario grabbing a student from behind, grabbing him by the neck, forcefully using his body weight to throw the student to the ground. Once on the ground, Mr. Rosario then puts his body weight on the student, pulls the student's head back while having the student in a chokehold. Is this San Bernardino City Unified School District training? How many of you parents in the audience would permit an adult to do that to your child? And unfortunately, here we are, three months later, looking at the same type of video footage of an of antagonizing students and employing brutal tactics. In the video that was on the news, the same video that was all over KTLA and even on the BBC, Mr. Rosario pulls a child while in a headlock, arm around his neck, before security employs pepper spray on the crowd. Is this treatment of a child acceptable? Is this SBCUSD protocol for dealing with students? How many of you parents in the audience would accept an adult grabbing your child around the neck and pulling them by their head? The students have had enough of this treatment. The teachers are too afraid of retaliation to speak up. I no longer work in this district, so I'm not afraid of retaliation. I work in another district now, and I have seen all of this firsthand. Board members, members of the cabinet, please do the right thing and protect our children from this man. Thank you.
Mr. Ogade, a real quick question from me.
Yes?
Did you ever receive a response to that email?
You replied to it?
The one that we replied to, yeah.
No, I never received a response.
Alright, thank you.
How's it going? I'm Kai King. I am co-founder of Stronger Together Now. We are an outreach program that works since the Inland Empire. And I was reached by Phil on the situation at hand, and we are here for the community to bring this to light. I think that far too often we have schools like this in San Bernardino that get glossed over. A lot of people have reached out to us and said, those kids deserved it. These kids are unruly, that these kids are San Bernardino kids and that they just act like that. As he said, how many of the parents in this audience would be okay with someone slinging their child to the ground? How many of the parents in this audience would be okay with their children being pepper sprayed at school? Our job as parents, educators, community activists, is to take our kids to school and hope that they get educated, not that they get manhandled and brutalized. And then the response is where they're San Bernardino kids, that they act like that and they possibly deserve that. We have reports that the faculty at the school was actually using the N-word. And that was the reason that the peaceful protest was started, to peacefully protest, to bring attention to the treatment that these young men and women have been subjugated to in Indian Springs High School and possibly Pacific, possibly Cajon. If this was in Loma Linda or in Redlands, it would be on the news and everyone would know about it. But unfortunately, our San Bernardino schools again get glossed over. So I give credit to this man for stepping out and really bringing attention to it. He's not worried about his career or his livelihood. But you have the young children and the teachers that are at the school that are like, I'm not going to step out because I don't want to be victimized, or I don't want to lose my job. So again, I urge the community to listen to the children. These kids aren't making these things up. These kids aren't saying that they're being called the N-word or being sexually harassed or being treated poorly for fun. Please listen to your, your children, and I urge you guys to do whatever needs to be done to remove this vice president from this, vice principal from the school. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Looks like we have another light on. Please, I have a music question. Mrs. Rosales Medina?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify. I know you mentioned that it was all started because there was the N-word that was used. Can you clarify, only, I know you can't go into specifics, but I'm just curious because I know that, yeah. So if you can clarify what you just mentioned a little bit.
The young lady, she actually was contacted by the Young Turks, which is a media outlet that's on YouTube, and they got the entire story of what happened. They had to dox the, the teacher's name. They couldn't put it online. But the young lady said that the teacher did call her the N-word, that they have been sexually and verbally harassed. And, you know, they just brought attention to that through the protest. But far too often, when we have protests, we get beat up. The protest is a form of communication or a way to stop the opposition. But any and every time that we have protests, we get beat up. And then they use whatever footage is available to say that the kids are the ones that are doing these things. His video that he showed me and showed you guys shows the vice principal doing that. He's not an officer. He's not trained to de-escalate any of these situations. So if I go to a school and I know that my principal wants to be a maverick, now we have a problem. If the officers handle the situation and they de-escalate the situation, like he said, that has been certified by San Bernardino Unified School District, that's fine. But you have a video of the vice principal beating up the children. So that, that's the problem at large, is that we have people that aren't trained to do any of these things, putting their hands on children and then saying, oh, well, these are San Bernardino kids. They do that anyway. So you're kind of calling the, you're, you're kind of making it an incited situation. You know what these kids are going to do. They're from the streets. They're from situations that are a little more dire and a little more difficult versus, you know, Redlands or Rancho or things of that nature. From what I saw in the video, he incited them and made it even worse. His job is to be admin and to, you know, sign awards for kids, to get awards for, you know, their, their efforts in the community, not to body slam children.
Alrighty. Thank you very much. Our next public comment speaker will be Keisha McGee. Welcome, Ms. McGee.
Good evening, board. My name is Keisha McGee. Most of you guys know me with my work as being a parent organizer with ICUC, Inland Congregations United for Change. But tonight I'm coming to you as a concerned parent who has a student in the virtual academy. My son, Keyshawn, was diagnosed with ADHD right at the end of his third grade year. He was having severe behavioral issues and educational challenges that caused me to have to often pick him up from school without him completing the school day. It was very frustrating for me as a parent. My husband and I decided to put him in virtual academy so that we could at least try to control and manage his behavior issues while on the virtual setting and being at home. He started his fourth grade year with two teachers. They were not assigned to teach together, but decided to because they understood the benefits it would have on the kiddos. I right away could tell they were teachers who knew how to teach in the virtual setting, a lot different from what was, what I was seeing when the world shut down on the cusp of COVID and us as a school district was pushed in the online world of schooling. They right away identified Keyshawn was often frustrated, rushed through his work, finding it hard to, to keep up with the other kids and often asked them to repeat their instructions. They reached out to me about these issues and if I, and I recently explained that diagnosis. They asked me if I was familiar with a 504 plan. I knew about 504, but was really against it. I felt it was, it was a label placed on kids and I didn't want my kid to be labeled as the ADHD kid that wasn't doing good in school. They helped me see the significance of having extra support in place so that Keyshawn had every opportunity to thrive and succeed in his education. And if I just, oh, sorry. They helped draft the 504 plan that would accommodate Keyshawn online schooling, and if I decided to return him in person. It was in our conversations of developing a good 504 plan for Keyshawn that I learned that they had educational background in online teaching and both, and both were highly qualified in online instruction. They and teachers like them are excelling in the virtual academy, going above and beyond to ensure students are getting the lesson and understanding concepts through the virtual setting. This is far more than what I have seen in similar settings. One teacher is involved in ensuring, engaging in parents in the virtual academy. Her heart's desire is to make sure that kids, parents and students have everything in the virtual academy realm. I couldn't have asked for better teachers in this period of transitioning from in-person to, to virtual. The start of fifth grade was rocky, to say the least. His new teacher, who I won't call out in public, not only refused to follow his 504 plan, but not, but didn't want to respond with questions I or Keyshawn asked regarding schoolwork. She was often condescending in her tone, rude and disrespectful. She was absent a lot of Keyshawn's, and Keyshawn spent his first half of the semester with substitute teachers, who also, along with students and parents, couldn't even understand the instructions and lesson plan that was laid out by this teacher. I often saw her struggle with apps and how to access them, even how to work them. Keyshawn and other students were scared to even ask questions because when they did, she would respond with stuff like, didn't you hear what I said? And I spelled it out in your agenda, refer to it. She, she would try, she would say it in a very rude way. She even didn't show up for Keyshawn's parent-teacher conference or cared to bother saying why she didn't. After meeting with the vice principal and other, about this matter and other things, I decided to remove Keyshawn out of that class. It was the best thing that I did. He was placed with another teacher who...
Time.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. McGee, thank you. Alrighty. Our next public comment speaker will be Estefania Espadaza. Welcome.
Hi, everyone, and good evening, honorable leaders of San Bernardino Unified School District. We are presenting a letter as a follow-up to our presentation from the board meeting on December 13, 2020, or 2022, excuse me. Inland Congregations United for Change, ICUC, together with the partnership from the Future of Learning, PICO California, and educators statewide, continue our advocacy for community schools that center on giving students and their family the necessary support and services for them to thrive. We are at a crucial point of a transformation in public education in California, as millions of dollars continue to be invested for the creation and investment of community schools. For half a decade, students and family with ICUC have met with state legislators and the Office of Governor to inform the creation of California Community Schools Partnership Program, the CCSPP. The success of this opportunity is grounded in community feedback and support from the youth, family, educators, community leaders and advocates. We are providing copies of a report and community schools toolkit created by our statewide partnerships to provide this information and how to best move forward. We address this letter with some concerns about the engagement process that San Bernardino Unified School District has undertaken in the last year. We, excuse me. We get, sorry. Last May, the California Department of Education approved grant requests from school districts statewide for community schools implementation and planning grants. A 200,000 community schools planning grant was awarded to San Bernardino Unified School District to start the preparation of community schools here in San Bernardino and Highland. Planning grantees are required to engage with students, families, educators and community partners in making a plan for collaboration, collaborative leadership and shared decision-making. We continue to be committed to continuing our collaborative relationship with San Bernardino Unified School District by providing some important information and making clear parent and student priorities for community schools. Here are the following five priorities from students and parents affiliated with ICUC. We recommend San Bernardino Unified School District follow the guidelines provided by California Department of Education on student, parent, educator and community engagement through the community schools grant and beyond. We also ask that San Bernardino Unified School District continue relying on our support to engage students and family in our district. We want clear answers as to how San Bernardino Unified School District intends to include students, parents and educators in the community school planning process. Starting this spring, implementation, implementation grantees are required to hold annual public meetings at both the campus and district levels to share the progress report updating on the implementation plan, including a description of the collaborative leadership and shared decision-making structure and process. As a community, we would like to hear where district officials are in this process. We expect to hear back from the San Bernardino Unified School District about this within the next three weeks. We need a clear answer on whether San Bernardino Unified School District plans to apply for this round of implementation grant or know if the district's plan is to do a second year of planning grant. If the district's plan is to apply for an implementation grant, we ask that you follow the CCSPP guidelines and requirements at this, as this year's application closes March 31st. As San Bernardino Unified School District develops a plan for the community schools, we urge officials to make college and career readiness a high priority. Students deserve pathways and opportunities that best fit their interests, parents and students' engagement and holistic approaches to students' wellness centers and services across our district. We want San Bernardino Unified School District Board members to attend a community schools forum on Thursday, March 23rd. We ask board members to join us on this date from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Parish Hall of Our Lady of Hope Cathedral, sorry, Cathal, Church, Our Lady of Hope Church, for informational and engagement forum with ICUC parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Espada. I think we got the date and the time as well and location. Alrighty, our next public comment and speaker is Talika Byther. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you? Hold on, I think I have to run a folder. Good evening, board members. I come to you with an incident that I personally witnessed more than once this school year under the same administrator hired and placed at George Brown Jr. Elementary School. The first time I saw a child being mistreated at the hands of our administrator and a few staff members, I sought help from various people within our district. No resolution resulted from my actions. So this time, I'm coming before you as once again, I have witnessed the administrator and a few staff members at George Brown Jr. Elementary abuse their authority over children. On Friday, March 3rd, 2023, at a school assembly to enhance culture and climate at our site, I witnessed the principal at George Brown Jr. Elementary School embarrass, heckle and make a mockery of a group of students who were doing nothing but exercising their freedom of speech. This incident occurred even after having met on this very same issue with SBTA, Dr. Funches and Luis Chavez in August of 2022. We are not going to continue the assembly until everyone stands. Everyone needs to stand for the pledge of allegiance. If you don't want to say it, that's fine, but you will stand. And the assembly was held up. Again, we are not going to continue, she repeated over and over, until everyone stands. Seeing that the kids' resolve was strong, she continued. A few staff members came to her assistance and began to yell at the sitting students. You're being disrespectful. Your parents are going to be called. You're going to be in trouble with Dr. Ramirez. Why are you doing that? A noon duty yelled at a student who was kneeling. That's disrespectful. Stand up. Listen to what you're being told to do. "That's disrespectful. Stand up. Listen to what you're being told to do. Stop being disrespectful." They were told over and over under the coercion and administrator and a few staff members at George Brown Junior Elementary School. The students have studied, unpacked, and internalized what it means to know your rights, stand up for your rights, and exercise your rights. These very students had to relive the history that they studied in books. These lessons became their own reality in two thousand and twenty-three in fifth grade at ten and eleven years old at George Brown Junior Elementary School. It broke the spirits of the onlookers who stood silently by. It broke the spirits of those students who were being taught to be social and cultural agents in the community in which they live. I'm coming to you on the behalf of that class who were left embarrassed, afraid, and confused and confused at the hands of a school administrator and a few staff members. These students have written letters to explain exactly what happened. I actually received over twenty-seven of them. I put together a sample of twelve, ranging from the high kids to the low kids. I didn't just pick ones that were strong in writing. I picked a sample of every grade level to voice their opinion. Some of those students are even here tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Byther, and Vice President Tillman, I believe, has a question for you.
Thank you very much for coming out. I just want to say for the record that students do not have to stand or recite the Pledge of Allegiance if they choose not to. I want to make sure we're all clear on that.
And we had a meeting with Dr. Funches, Luis Chavez, and SBTA to make that clear, but for some reason, it did not occur on this past Friday.
And I want to make sure we stated here openly to the public that a student does not have to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance or put their hand over their heart or recite it. They do not have to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up with that. So then, just to clarify, then, has things improved?
No, it just happened this past Friday.
Oh, this past Friday?
This past Friday.
Because you mentioned there was an incident last year, so that's different.
Okay, so it happened in August of two thousand and twenty-two. It was addressed, but it reoccurred this past Friday.
Okay, so then it reoccurred. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Alrighty, our next, let me turn it off, our next public comment and speaker is Angela Montpass. Montpass? Hope I get that right. Welcome. Good evening.
President Wyatt, Vice President Danny Tillman, members of the school board. I am here before you tonight, asking for your help. My school site, George Brown Junior Elementary School, is falling apart at the seams like it never has before. Our current school population is seven hundred fifty-six students, which means we are the largest elementary school in our district. Our daily attendance rate is ninety-point-four percent. Our overall CASP results for two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two in reading met or exceeded was only twenty-five percent. For math, fifteen percent, which means those who nearly met or did not meet seventy-five percent in reading and eighty-five percent in math. African-American students who met or exceeded was only nine percent in both reading and math. This means that ninety-one percent of our African-American students nearly met or did not meet the standards in reading and math this past year. The same is true for our English-language learners. We are now a program improvement school according to our current administration, and there are many variables that point to our lack of success. We have had no less than twelve administrators since November of two thousand and fifteen, three principals, four retired administrators, and five vice principals. Most of these administrative changes have occurred in the last three and a half years. All but two have been newly hired administrators with little to no experience. This has had a destabilizing effect upon our sites and among our staff. Since each administrator has implemented necessary changes to complete their vision for our school, some visions have been very contradictory to other visions. As a school site council member, our SIPSA plan has not been fully implemented since two thousand and fifteen. In our SBSA, our support staff is to be utilized in our classrooms, working with students. This is not happening. To be clear, our CASP data was poor before the pandemic. Now, considering the devastating effect of COVID and what it has had on student learning and student achievement, we need an all-hands-on-deck approach to help build the numerous gaps in students' understanding and achievement. It is important to underscore that the most successful interventions come through student contact with staff. This has not been fully practiced for multiple school years. This school year, we have lost multiple teachers and staff, including a dual teacher, a demonstration teacher, a resource pullout teacher, our school librarian, and several certificated resident subs and interns, all of whom left abruptly in the middle of this two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three school year. To these points, we have supplied a list of just a few alarming and unusual practices to share with the board that gives you a better glimpse of our school site. Out of courtesy, I will not be sharing the contents of that information publicly, but I am trusting it will be received and reviewed by each of the board members in earnest. So with this information, I am hoping that you will be able to assist George Brown Elementary School to become the successful school it was meant to be for the sake of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montpass. Alrighty, our next public comment and speaker will be Sandra D. Trujillo. Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, board members. I am the dual I am the dual-emergent teacher who abruptly left this school year. I love my students dearly, and I did not mean to come up here and cry. And I'm gonna stop. So, I'm good, thank you. My name is Sandra Trujillo. I am a dual-language emergent educator. As a dual educator for SBCUSD, I was required by the multilingual department, who oversees our program, to teach in alignment with the three pillars of dual-language instruction. They are bilingualism and bilinguacy, high academic achievement, and social-cultural competency, which is the ability to work, play, and exist among all cultures. The ability to stand up for the rights of those who don't sorry, who don't speak, look, or think like you, and the overall grappling with the history of this nation and being willing to change the future. In accordance with these pillars, my students studied past and present civil rights events. They analyzed the Constitution and collectively unpacked the Pledge of Allegiance along with a Supreme Court case of Barnett versus West Virginia, the history and the history of patriotic traditions in this nation. Through this work, my students use their critical thinking skills to apply this knowledge with the ideals of the pledge, and thus were given the opportunity to exercise their right to freedom of speech in a grade level where US history and the making of this nation is the primary focus. My students exercise their right to freedom of speech in a written assignment where they justify their personal decision by citing historical evidence and the validity of the statements made in these documents based on their own cultural identities and personal experiences in this community and in this nation. The multicultural lessons taught in my class year-round helps my students to consistently rethink and reevaluate their personal choices. My students take a variety of different actions during the flag salute. Some kneel, some sit, some stand in silence, and some recite it with family pride. But all are valued, celebrated, and respected. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trillo. Alrighty, our next public comment and speaker is, if I get this right, apologies, Señora Arce Ladesma? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Anna Arce, and I have a student in George Brown Elementary, fifth-grade dual emerging. That's, Ms. Trujillo was her former teacher. And I'm really here on behalf of the behavior of our principal, making threats to our children to call their parents if they don't stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance and making them cry. I'm really disappointed with the way she behaved in treating our children. And she's been doing a lot of erratically stuff, like when they're on lunch, she made the decision that they couldn't, in the beginning of the year, that they couldn't talk to anybody, they couldn't see anybody, and they cannot listen to music, they, I don't know, they, she really makes them cry. So I'm really not happy with the principal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ladesma. Alrighty, our next public comment and speaker, looks like Señora Velgara. Welcome. Good evening.
Buenas tardes. Hay alguien que me puede ayudar a traducir?
Yeah, I mean, it's
gracias. Gracias. Bueno, yo soy mamá de un niño de la escuela George Brown Elementary.
Hello, I am the mother of a child in George Brown Elementary.
En el mes de noviembre, a principios del mes de noviembre, se supo que uno, un niño de la clase de mi hijo, está en quinto grado, tocó a mi hijo inappropriadamente, pero no nomás a mi hijo.
So, at the beginning of November, in the month of November, it seems like there's a child in fifth grade who touched my son inappropriately, not just my son.
Y a mí me habló la maestra para avisarme. Ya me hablaron como dos horas antes de que salieran los niños. Eso se había sabido desde la mañana, y a mí me avisaron hasta muy tarde.
So, the teacher called me, called me two hours before the children were going to be let out. And that was a bit too late because the children were already going to be let out. That's something that was known since the morning.
Cuando yo llegué a la oficina, en ese rato le hablaron a mi hijo.
When I arrived at the office, they called my son.
Entonces la directora me empezó a explicar qué era lo que había pasado. Entonces yo le pregunté que por qué hasta ese momento ellos me estaban avisando, si ellos sabían desde temprano lo que había pasado con mi hijo.
So, the principal started explaining what was happening, but I then asked her how come she didn't call me earlier when it had happened? It had already happened, and she knew earlier.
Ella se molestó mucho porque la maestra me había avisado primero, la maestra antes que ella. Ella y la subdirectora, estaban las dos.
So, she got bothered, if she was bothered, because the teacher had let me know beforehand. And, well, she's the vice principal. They were both there.
Me dijeron que la maestra no tenía por qué haberme avisado a mí. Entonces les dije que entonces ellas cuando me iban a avisar a mí. Yo como mamá, cuando algo le pasa a mi hijo o ustedes como padres, ustedes quieren estar en el momento casi que su hijo está siendo dañado.
So, she let me know, I let her know I'm the parent, and also, in case anything that happens to my child, I would like to be aware, you as parents would like to know or be there if your child is being mistreated.
Entonces lo que ella me dijo es de que no me preocupara que todo estaba bien. Le dije que qué pasaba con el niño que los había tocado a los demás niños. Me dijo que ese niño se iba a mover de escuela. Le dije, okay.
So, she said, "Don't worry." And then I said, "Well, what's going to happen with that child that was touching the other children?" And she said, "Well, they're going to move them from schools."
También le comenté yo, si el distrito sabía lo que estaba pasando. Ella me comentó que sí sabían.
I also asked if the district knew what was happening. She said, "Yes, that district did know."
Entonces hasta ahorita ese tema ya no se volvió a tocar. Entonces yo lo que me pregunto, si hubiera sido algo más grave, ¿qué hubiera pasado?
So, up to date, this topic hasn't been touched any longer. So if something more dangerous would have happened, what would have happened?
Entonces yo quiero saber, sinceramente, no me gusta esta señora ahí, porque para mí no está cuidando a los niños como ella tiene que hacerlo. También, en el evento de Navidad fuimos, nos pidieron la licencia para entrar al evento, y nos las quitaron. Ya cuando salimos, tuvimos que ir a recogerlas a una mesa, y estaban todas las licencias, espuestas, todas las de los papás.
So, I sincerely don't like this lady there. She's not taking care of our children the way that they're supposed to be. And also, for December, there was an event, and they requested our licenses. They took our licenses, and then, once they were going to hand them back to us, they were just spread out on the table. All of our licenses were spread out on the table.
Yo como mamá, por favor, les pido que pongan atención con esta señora, y si se puede, por favor, saquenla de ahí.
And I, as a mother, I ask that you please pay attention to this lady, and if it's possible, please get her out of there.
Porque cuando una la necesita, nunca está. Afuera nunca se mira. Ella siempre está en la oficina ocupada.
Because when we need her, she's never there. Outside, you never see her. She's always in the office, busy.
De hecho, yo desde que paso ese evento con mi niño, hasta ahorita ya no la he vuelto a ver, a ella.
As it is, ever since that incident happened with my son, I haven't seen her.
Y mi niño es un niño que tiene IEP.
And my son is a child who has an IEP.
Entonces él, de verdad, nomás con vele, él se pone nervioso. Yo tengo a mi niño aquí.
And truly, as just seeing her, he gets nervous. I have my son here with me.
Si lo ven, mi niño se come mucho las uñas de nervio. Sinceramente, él le tiene nervios a esta señora.
If you see him, he bites his nails very often, and he's just very afraid of that lady.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, our next public comment and speaker is Ronald Trust. Welcome and good evening.
Afternoon. I'm Ron Trust. I have a son that goes to Serrano Middle School. From what I've been hearing, it just sounds like you guys have a bunch of rogue vice principals and principals. My issues with a principal, two weeks ago, right before the storm hit, my son texts me that the principal wanted to take his cellphone away. He put it from one pocket to the next pocket. And I go to talk to the principal. She, we had a meeting outside in the rain when it was about thirty-eight degrees. I did call Dr. Funchy about it. He told me he was going to handle it. As of now, Ms. Freeman doesn't give a excuse my French. She told me that she doesn't care about the district. I had this conversation with Dr. Funchy yesterday when we were trying to have a middle ground. Dr. Funchy told me that they were going to schedule a meeting so we could have a medium ground in parents and administrative staff to work together. Ms. Freeman is power hungry. She doesn't want to listen to nobody. My son is a three-point-eight student at the school, has not had no referrals ever at the school. This is my first encounter with her. So, from here on out, I guess it's just going to be bad interactions with her. And like I told my son in front of Ms. Freeman and Ms. Stevenson, I literally tell him every day to pull his phone out. And if they want to keep him in the office and him miss out on education, then that's just what we'll do. And that's just where I'm at with Ms. Freeman. So I don't know what you guys want to do with Ms. Freeman. It's just, I think she needs to work with the parents instead of against the parents. But I don't know what else to do. I don't know what else to do. It's my first encounter with her, so if nothing's going to be done on you guys, then I guess I'll just have to take things into my own mind.
Dr. Wyatt, as the evaluator of that school site, I was working with Ms. Freeman and Mr. Trust, and I'll continue to do that. We'll have a follow-up session probably at the end of the week, just to go over just to go over some of the concerns presented here and see the best possible way to move forward. And I'll leave it at that, as it is a personnel issue as well, okay?
Okay, but I do think sometimes it'd be nice for you guys to physically see how some of you guys' staff act besides just hearing it, because it's just, it's so appalling that you could have a faculty member tell you straight to your face, if he can't follow procedures now, what is he going to do in the future? I mean, what are we alluding to now? I have a kid that goes to Oregon State, so I mean, I have four kids, so I have one. Obviously, I'm doing something right. So for you to start perceiving something, I can't assume nothing because I'm not going to do that. But if she wants to assume something, then I don't know what else to do.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Funchy. Mr. Trust, looks like we have a comment or a question from Mrs. Alzamadina.
I just wanted to clarify, you said, you mentioned Serrano Middle School?
Serrano Middle School.
Okay.
Alrighty, thank you, sir. Alrighty, our next public comment and speaker is Mr. Francisco. Are you still here? Welcome. Apologies on the last time, I couldn't tell if it's Trejo or Tretto? Tretto? Alright, gracias.
Tretto is T-R-E-T-O. Tretto. Bueno, buenas noches a todo el distrito escolar en general. Yo soy un padre de familia.
Good evening to the entire board in general. I am a parent.
Mi hija se encuentra en la escuela George Brown.
My daughter attends George Brown.
Y bueno, lamentablemente, este caso se relaciona con un anterior caso que yo tuve. Tuve un hijo con autismo.
So unfortunately, this case is relatable to another case that I had. I have a son with autism.
Y, y, en, por culpa, o en base a acusaciones de maestros que no son buenos elementos, acusaron a mi hijo que no servía para la escuela, que afectaba sus credenciales, es que está relacionado con el caso anterior, con el caso que sigue, y que, y que, y que no lo, no lo querían en la escuela.
So, based on teachers and comments and accusations from the teachers, it would tell my son that he was no good for school, that he was affecting them. And well, this, what I'm telling you, has to do with the next case that I will talk about.
Mi hijo necesitaba el programa de IEP, algo así, para autismo, para autistas. Y entonces, el maestro, uno de ellos llegó a la acusación máxima de que mi hijo era un criminal, y lo escribió en las, en las notas.
So, my son has a program IEP or for autism. And well, it got to the point where a teacher came to the point of accusing my son as a criminal, and it is in the notes. It's in the notes.
Una corrección, no, no dijo que era un criminal. Dijo que iba a ser un criminal y que no tenía futuro en la educación.
Okay, correction. So, he didn't say he was a criminal. He was going to be a criminal, and he had no future in education.
Por lo tanto, en base a eso, el distrito me pidió que tenía que firmar esa hoja para poderle dar el IEP.
And because of that, the district asked...
Arce.
And because of that, the district asked that I had to sign the documents in order for the IEP to take effect.
Entonces, el distrito, pues en base a eso, me estuvo deteniendo a mi hijo por tres o cuatro años de esa necesidad que tenía él de IEP, de autismo, y afectó su rendimiento escolar y todo. Voy a concluir.
Okay, and because of that, the district held back my son or three or four years of not being able to get the assistance that he needed from the IEP for the autism services. So I'll just get to the point.
Para concluir, lo que quiero llegar a decir al distrito, que a veces como máximos representantes podemos equivocarnos, y necesitamos ayuda. Nuestra comunidad, nuestros hijos, nuestros alumnos necesitan ayuda. Prueba de ello, concluyendo, mi hijo tiene tres carreras profesionales. Ese criminal que se acusó, que iba a ser negativo para la sociedad, tiene tres carreras profesionales.
So, in conclusion, and we need the maximum representation from the district. And yes, we all make mistakes, but our students need it. And just to let you know that Criminal now has three professional careers, three professional careers.
Tres.
Three.
No one.
Not one.
En, en, en otro caso, este, yo vengo, yo no tenía el, el, el derecho o el conocimiento de conocer la maestra Trujillo. Ella es maestra de mi hija, y tenemos un caso similar.
And on the other hand, I didn't know, I had no knowledge of meeting Ms. Trujillo, and she is my daughter's teacher, and we have a similar case.
Tenemos un caso similar porque no es ella, es, es la maestra que es, la directora de la escuela, cómo se llama? La directora Ramírez, Ramírez.
And, well, it's not her. It's, well, in this case, we're talking about the principal, Ramirez, Ramirez.
Con mala, con mala conducta esta, esta directora, con mala conducta, y aparte, haciendo menos a nuestra comunidad, quitando, tratando de quitar la escuela bilingüe, que es un instrumento principal para nuestra comunidad, y aparte ofendiendo a nuestra comunidad y ofendiendo a los alumnos, y no permitir, permitirles su creatividad como elementos.
And, and just in part with this bad behavior belittling our community, trying to eliminate the bilingual program, and which is something very important. It's a key instrument in our education, and also not allowing them to just express their creativity.
Entonces, yo felicito a la maestra aquí, a la maestra Trujillo, que es un buen elemento. De hecho, mandaron a esta maestra como que exclusivamente a quitar, a quitar a la maestra Trujillo de esa escuela.
And I congratulate Ms. Trujillo, who is a great element and asset. And it almost seems like that they sent this other person to take out Ms. Trujillo out of that school.
Yo no tenía el conocimiento de conocerla, pero estaba behind my daughter, detrás de mi hija.
I didn't know her. I hadn't met her, but she was behind my daughter. She was supporting my daughter.
Y del conocimiento de todo lo que está pasando en la escuela con esta maestra, esta directora honestamente es un elemento negativo, negativo, cien por ciento.
And with everything that's happening at the school, and also just this principal, this principal, she is just bad, bad element in that school. Negative, negative.
Esto.
That's it.
Gracias.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tretto. Alrighty, our next speaker is Nancy Sanchez Spears. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Sanchez Spears. I'm a retired teacher with the San Bernardino City Unified School District. I know many of you, and it's nice to see you again. I'm not used to sitting that long. My knees kind of froze up. I appreciate the support that you give to the teachers who are up in the mountains. I know you're, you're very concerned for them and hoping that they'll be down soon. But I'd like to remind you that there are teachers here in the district who are working twice as hard, three times as hard, in support of those teachers by covering classes, by having extra students in classes. And they too are under stress. So I hope that you will remember in some way to compensate both sides who are having difficulties during this time. I know you are very sensitive and appreciative of teachers and staff. And I know it's not just teachers. There are staff up there too, and it's tough. But I do have a nice note to say that one of the teachers contacted me and said that even though he doesn't like being up there, he's been able to assist and support many of his elderly neighbors who have absolutely no support. So, our, our people are good, and I just wanted to share that with you and let you know that I appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spears.
Spears, thank you for coming. And I do want to tell you, I thought this says snowboarding. I thought because of physical education, you were talking about, but thank you.
Did have snowboarding on there, by the way, so. You inspire us. Alrighty, our next public comment and speaker is Ms. Negretti. Welcome.
Good evening, board. Last year, San Bernardino City Unified School District attempted to violate parental rights, health and safety codes, and federal laws when it assumed consent for COVID group testing, which carried a penalty of $25,000 per student. Such took place while Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez and the Safety and Emergency Manager Eric Batier were in charge of all COVID-related means, matters. This year, San Bernardino City Unified is once again trampling on students and parental rights by assuming consent and falling to properly notify parents of their rights to exempt their children before having students partake in the new district survey for children in grades third through twelve. The district has many resources at its disposal to notify parents, such as emails through Parents Square, school site emails, Facebook, Instagram, and the United States Postal Service. Yet, this survey was not received by many parents. And upon renewing the letter, which I just received today, which reads in part, "Dear SBCUSD families and students in grades three to twelve, in keeping with the, with the changes of accountability to focus on the California Eighth State priorities, schools in California are being asked to utilize ongoing surveys tools to capture information on students' risk behavior and perception of school climate. We are administering a district survey to students in grades three through twelve that will meet these specific needs during February and March. The student survey, to measure progress towards the district goals of district safety and sense of belonging, the results are compiled by school-studied and assisted in improving services to students and community. The results can also be studied by student groups, grade levels, and school to school to ensure all community members are thriving within our schools. To that end, students in grades six through twelve will be asked three questions regarding gender and orientation. These results are confidential, and no students' individual responses can be reviewed. However, the results allow the schools in the district to look at the needs and current feelings of safety and sense of helping for our LGBTQ+ student culture. If you would like to exempt your student from answering the surveys, please contact your child's school office by March 3rd. For questions regarding the survey, the survey, please call Colleen Williams, Director of Student Wellness and Support Services, or Marta Binch, Assistant Director of Student and Wellness Services. The deadline was Friday. Clearly, it states that in this letter. And so, because we are just receiving it, and some of the schools have already taken it after the fact, I'm here to make a formal request. As elected representatives of all students and parents, I strongly encourage you to support services that are inclusive of students without the, without the need to be intrusive or provide intrusive thoughts, acts, or behaviors to children. Today, March 7, 2023, I am formally requesting that you direct San Bernardino City Unified staff to cease and nullify the surveys, the service taken to capture student risk behaviors and perceptions of school climate. Cease participation of surveys till the district has obtained consent from parents or guardians. Nullify the taken surveys due to the absence of parental or guardian consent and untimely notification to exempt their students. The district later dated February 20th from Director of Student and Wellness Support Services, Colleen Williams, was received by some parents via U.S., United States Postal Service mail on the last day to exempt children. From surveys, in the date of parents have, and to date, the parents have expressed that they did not receive the letter before, and they were unaware that the, that the survey was being administered. In the past, the district has utilized many of their resources. To this date, none of those were used. United States Postal Service receiving this late, it's not good. To provide transparency and allow parents to make fully informed decisions, please adopt a policy to provide survey questions ahead of time so that parents can make fully informed decisions. You may lack the moral conviction, but you cannot skip your legal obligations. I would like to share with you two of the questions in that survey. Question number twenty-five, some people describe themselves as transgender when their sex is a sign at birth that does not match the way that they think or feel about their gender. Number twenty-five, below is a list of terms people often use to describe their sexual orientation.
Ms. Negretti, that's time.
How do you describe?
If there are questions or comments from the board, we didn't. You can't submit them to us, so if you'd like. We have them right, the ones they have, give them to us. Alright, thank you, Ms. Negretti. Alright, Ms. Cunningham, is that it for in-person public comments, I believe?
Yes.
And then we have one virtual public comment?
Yes.
Okay, and I believe that is Ms. Jessica King, if she's still with us.
Yes, I'm still with you.
Alright, good evening and welcome.
Thank you for having me. I am a San Bernardino resident. I've lived here for over twenty years. I'm a graduate of Cal State San Bernardino, as are my parents. Mr. Barry and Marvell Thompson both graduated from Cal State San Bernardino and were active teachers in the Realta School District. I myself was a PTA president at Carmack and Harmon Elementary, both special education schools in San Bernardino. And I myself has received the recognition of the board. And tonight, I am here to express concern over excessive use of force in the schools and that I hope that the board and the administrators of the school site at Indian Springs will take into consideration the concerns of the faculty, students, and families, and consider removing the vice principal or making sure that these things do not happen again. And I would also like to include that, as a parent, I would definitely have an issue with this. And I would hope that no criminal charges are being brought upon the children. Given the current situation of kids returning to, to school, having to readapt and recover after COVID, that we need to be especially gentle with our students and reevaluate our use of administrative force. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King.
That's all the comments.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Cunningham. We will move on to seven, four-point-oh, closed session, four-point-one, closed session, public comments.
There are none.
Alright, there are no comments, and we will go ahead and recess the closed session. Alrighty, folks. Alrighty, alright, folks, we'll go ahead and come back into open session. Moving on with five-point-one, be it resolved, the Board of Education approves appointment of following employee, Alan Kay. Alan Kay, Assistant Director, College and Career Effective Date, work year, and salary to be determined, funding 419.
So moved. Okay.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. Mr. Kay, congratulations, Dr. Kay, excuse me. Congratulations. I think he's in the house, so go ahead and stand up for us, sir, sir. Thank you for your patience in waiting these long nights. I imagine you have many more ahead of you now, so congratulations. Got it. Thanks, sir. Alrighty, moving on to 5.2. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves settlement agreement number SS-22-23-02 in the amount of $47,000 for, $47,411. Board of Education authorized the purchasing, purchasing director to sign all related documents.
Moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Dr. Wyatt, can we do verbal on that? My board docs is not working right this second.
Yes, ma'am. We will start to my left with, uh, Mr. Husky.
Aye.
Ms. Savios.
Aye.
Vice President Tillman.
President Y, aye. Um, Ms. Aviles Grande.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Rosas Medina.
Aye.
And then Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Alright. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to 5.3. Certificated reassignment. Be it resolved, the Board of Education has determined on an individual basis that the following certificated employees be given notice prior to March 15th, 2023, that their employment with the district not be renewed for the 2023-2024 school year pursuant to Education Code 44929.21, and the superintendent or his designee is hereby authorized to give written notice the action prior to March 15th, 2023 pursuant to Education Code 44929.21, uh, HR dash CRT 22 dash 23 dash 07, HR dash CRT dash 22 dash 23 dash 08, HR dash CRT dash 22 dash 23 dash 10.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. We'll go ahead and move on to 5.4, certificated reassignment. Be resolved, the Board of Education has determined that the following certificated employee be given notice prior to March 15th, 2023, that he or she may be released from assignment as a coordinator effective at the end of the 2022-2023 school year and reassigned to an assignment consistent with his or her credential authorizations effective at the beginning of the 2023-2024 school year, and a superintendent or his designee is hereby authorized to give written notice of this action pursuant to Education Code 44951, HR dash CRT dash 22 dash 23 dash 05. The move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Hey, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.5, certificated reassignment. Be resolved, the Board of Education has determined that the following certificated employee be given notice prior to March 15th, 2023, that he or she may be released for an assignment as principal effective at the end of the 2022-2023 school year and reassigned to an assignment consistent with his or her credential authorizations effective at the beginning of the 2023-2024 school year, and a superintendent or his designee is hereby authorized to give written notice of this action pursuant to Code, Education Code 44951, HR dash CRT dash 22 dash 23 dash 06. The move. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.6. Alright. Be resolved, the Board of Education determined that the following classified employees be given notice prior to March 15th, 2023 effective at the end of the 2022-2023 school year, the superintendent or his designee is hereby authorized to give written notice for the action pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957. The vote.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.7, expulsion of students. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation findings of hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings of facts and recommendations and orders the expulsion the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code, Section 48900. The vote.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 5.8. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation and findings of facts of positive development and orders suspension and/or expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code, Section 48900.
I'm moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Hey, motion carries. Moving on to 5.9. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts the following students recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and order of availability of other means of correction in compliance with the Education Code, Section 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted.
I'm moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Hey, motion carries. Moving on to 5.10, lift of expulsion of students. The Board of Education authorizes the remission of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the San Marino Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code, Section 48900.
I'm moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none. Alright, motion carries. Moving on to 5.11. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the expulsion and/or youth court modification, expulsion or rescinding the following student with the identification number as indicated below to schools of San Marino Unified School District in accordance with the Board rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code, Section 48900.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, let's vote. Alright, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.12, other closed session action. There is no other closed session action, so we'll move on to 6.0, report by union organizations. 6.1, San Marino Teachers Association.
No report.
No report. Thank you very much. 6.2, California School Employee Association.
No report.
Alright, thank you very much. 6.3, Communication Workers of America.
No report.
Three for three. Going on to 6.4, San Marino School Police Officers Association.
No report.
Alright, great reports. Thank you very much. We will move on to 7.0, board discussion. 7.1, CSBA Legal Services. Alright, at February 7th, 2023, board meeting, representatives from CSBA's district and County Office of Education Legal Services shared information with the board regarding their services. The board will discuss whether to use their services to provide trainings and/or other legal assistance. And I believe we do have a copy of their presentation that was given to you as well. Um, that is part of your packet, and I do see Ms. Rosas Medina's light on, so we will start our discussion with her.
Yeah, no, I, I do support the fact that they will also provide, um, you know, uh, board member trainings, especially when we have new board members. Think that would be important. I know that CSBA also offers, um, specific type of, um, trainings, um, but it's always good for them in case they have any questions, just to quickly ask and so forth. So this is, I, I think this would be, um, a great way to, um, help new board members as well as existing ones as well.
Thank you, Ms. Rosas Medina. Any other comments? Oh, Vice President Tillman. There we go, got you.
I'm just trying to get a feeling when you say, what, what are we talking about doing here?
Um, just, um, I believe acquiring their services as legal services.
I mean, it's one thing to ask for training about stuff. A whole different thing in terms of, uh, legal service. They didn't sound that robust to me. Uh, right now, we, we select, uh, what firm we use based on the expertise that we need, correct? So this could be another firm that we use depending on what their expertise is. Because it really did sound like this is something they're just starting, and it didn't sound real robust when they were in the presentation. And it is separate from CSBA. That's what it sounded like in the presentation. And then what's the scope of the contract you're looking at?
I think that we'd have to look at, negotiate.
That's my point, though. Before we say, yes, we're gonna move forward.
It's discussion, I think, at this point, Mr. Tillman.
Okay.
It's not an action item.
Because the way, um, this.
Oh, yeah, I, I, the thing is that for me, when I look at the legal trainings, um, the legal aspect is separate. I think, I consider that separate because it's not, um, if you look at it, it's only if you have like specific type of questions, but I'm looking more at the trainings, the legal trainings.
By one clarification, so I guess you're gonna say we have discussion, and before we move forward, we would look at being more specific about how much we're gonna spend on training and if we're gonna enter into an agreement for legal services and what in particular.
Sir, and then it would be, it would be an action item at that time. And I think, Ms. Marion Grande, you were next.
Um, yeah, my question is, you know, this sounds kind of like Legal Shield, you know, I, I, we actually have that at home and we, uh, a few times that I've tried to use it, uh, you have to call and make an appointment, and then they get back and they call you, and it's not like at your fingertips, really. It's a long involved, and then I was always kind of unhappy. It was like the kind of answers I got, I could find out on the internet by myself, you know? So, so as far as the trainings, I think it looks like, uh, some more like online self. They just give me a point where to go, and then I go and read it by myself. Except for this part where it says monthly lunch and learn events with legal services attorneys. Well, you know, that sounds like legal aid too, so I don't, I don't know. I'm just wondering, is it for us individually as board members with things to do with board, or is it individually personal? Can I call and, find out about my dog bite, you know?
But no, and I think, you know, great question, Ms., uh, um, Javier's Grande, that, no, this was also an issue, I think, recently with our, with our board and our, our district that, you know, there was concern about representation for board members. So this would definitely be representation for board members, um, you know, and I like them because they're, they're CSBA, California School Board Association, so they're associated with the school boards. And for me, that was a concern that came up, you know, within the last year. And so I think that's one of the main reasons why we had started this discussion, um, in addition to the professional developments and trainings. And they do offer legal aid services, just so you know, legal services, I shouldn't say aid. Ms. Applegate?
And I believe the board had expressed interest. We do have currently one law firm that we are working with, and so you had expressed interest in looking possibly to other law firms. Um, so that's where that came from. So it's a discussion, and we could get a scope of work if you want. We could ask for something more thorough.
It did, um, on, well, they don't have page numbers, I apologize. But on one of the pages, they did have their costs, um, estimated cost. They have a subscription, obviously, for their annual dues, 10%. And then first three hours of returning time are free of charge, and then attorney billed at competitive rate of $200 an hour, which I think that's actually really competitive. Ms. Savios.
Yeah, so, um, thank you, thank you for the comments that you made, actually, because, um, I do remember that this came about, um, within the last year or so, you know, um, situations that happened, um, that kind of rose questions for some of us, um, about certain law firms that we have contracts with. Some were let go, some we kept, et cetera. Um, and in addition to the trainings that I think is, is, it's great that we're doing that and that we're gonna have access to it if, if we move forward with it, but, but also, um, I was, I, I am one of, of the board, of the board members here that would like to get more information about the legal scope because I am interested and I would like for us to look into, and of course, it has to meet the needs, right? Um, but it sounds like they are relatively more affordable hourly than, you know, um, some, some, most of the other legal firms. And so, um, yeah, I, I would, I would like to get more information, um, because as is, there's been some conflict with certain legal firms, um, that we've had, and as, uh, you said, uh, Ms. Applegate, we, we only currently are working with one, so those are my comments.
Thank you, Vice President. Oh, wait, Ms. Chahuski?
Thank you. Um, I'm kind of curious on what comes, what, what it comes under the subscription cost, and then what are the billable hours, you know, um, activities? Um, I, I think this, it looks good to me, and maybe that's, you know, from my experience as, as member benefits. Um, there are some things I think we really could use in terms of the repository, that resource library. Um, some of the, the, under the affordable legal advice, I was looking at some of those things, like we, we've been working on policy. Um, you know, we might have questions about that, or we may be able to, there may be a place there where we can not have to invent the wheel because policy is so cumbersome. Um, so I, I think there's some things that if some of these things are within the, the subscription would be very beneficial. Um, you know, um, including the trainings. Um, but I was just, you know, really curious, like what, what, what's gonna cost us the $200 an hour and what comes within the subscription? So if we could do that, you know, um, if everything we do is within the $200, then, you know, it might not necessarily be that good a deal. But it looks on, you know, on first blush, like thi, this could be a real good deal for us just to get some added expertise and some way for us as a board to be able to access information, um, to make artwork easier.
Ms. Chahuski, Vice President Tillman?
I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but I just can imagine. Right now, we only have a contract with one law firm?
I don't think that's correct. I believe we have two, at least two.
At least two. I mean, because you have law firms that we don't get talked about. They're doing stuff for, uh, property acquisition or bonds or, or, there's a whole list of law firms that we use.
Mr. Tillman, no, we have more than one. We, one general counsel, which is Atkinson Anderson, uh, a, yeah, but that's a general counsel. We have other counsel.
We just did one the other, other day for, that's what I'm saying. We have more than, I just want to be clear. Right. Because to the average person listening, I don't want them to walk away thinking we only have a contract with one law firm, because that's not true.
That's not correct. Yes, you're correct. That's not true. And, uh, you remember, I bring, uh, uh, informations that, uh, to look at, uh, TPLF, uh, the, if you're more interested to explore, bring another general counsel.
And, and you brought another law firm because you said they were more responsive and could do work for us also.
Correct.
And, and I have to say, you know, I'm all about saving money, but when you go to law. And, and I have to say, you know, I'm all about saving money, but when you go to law firms and you're in a case or you're about ready to deal with some legal issues, usually the more qualified and expertise a firm has, the more they're gonna charge you. And usually if you get somebody that's cheap, it's not, you're not jumping up and down because you're excited about it, you got a cheap law firm, you're gonna have a concern that this might not be the best one in this area. And what I heard from CSBA, they're kind of generalized, and they're not gonna be a firm that we bring in for some big case in a specific area. So as long as we're on the same page, I'm fine with it. And how we're gonna use it in, in terms of the scope, then I'm okay on this item in terms of what we're gonna do with CSBA Legal Services. But in terms of them replacing all our law firms, I don't think that's gonna happen.
Mr. Tillman, may I clarify this? From best of my knowledge, CSBA, if you read the front page, it says for CSBA members. We, as a school district, we are members. Since a membership benefit, so they have a list of the attorneys, they'll refer you as needed to the council. So this is not that they have a law firm, they serve as a CSBA to districts as attorney to represent us. This is the list of the law.
I agree a hundred percent. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
You're correct.
Thank you.
You're correct, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. All right, Ms. Alexander?
One question. So do we know what other districts CSBA works with? Is it?
That would have been one of my questions, too, to see if anybody has acquired their, their services, then to get maybe an opinion from them. I'm sure if we ask, they probably have a list of folks.
That would help.
Absolutely.
Ms. Savios?
Just, just for clarification, and I guess for, for myself and for the public. What is general counsel, and how does that differ from other firms that we work with in other departments?
Thank you, thank you for asking. That's a good point. General counsel, they have pretty much look at everything general. Like, we use some attorney specialized on the facilities. Their expertise on the rules and regulation dealing with acquisitions, constructions, those stuff. We think we have an attorney to do, they're specialized. So it's like a doctor, they're all doctors, but they have a specialized. When you have a heart problem, you go to the heart especially. You know, that's kind of the, how, the general counsel is like your general practitioner. They know, but they're not specialized. But when you go look for specialized, certain guidance as a counsel, we go to the specialized counsel. So we do have another attorney, and I can, I'll be glad to provide you the list of the counsel we currently have, with the service they provide to the district. I can, I can do that.
And I would appreciate that, because I think that what is being said, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that for general counsel, we only have one or maybe two at most firms. Okay, so, so that's, that's what we mean. We don't typically, we will, we will not typically use a specialized firm that deals with bonds and facilities for other things within the district personnel and so forth.
You're correct. So we have, again, it's the nature of the business, what do we need, then we go to that counsel.
But just for, I guess for public, that's what, that's what we were referring to when we said we only have one, one legal firm, that we only have one legal firm that does general counsel.
You're correct.
No, thank you. And I had another question, I think it just left me. Oh, we hire general counsel, so, so even though they're broad and they don't specialize, we still need them, because we currently have some, correct?
You're correct. They're, as a retainer, you use them as needed, so we don't pay anything like ongoing unless we use them. Every time you call them, they're on, they're like, the clock is running, and they're charging you.
So, so with that being said, and again, the reason what, and of course, we would want to have more information, because I think that we all still have a lot of questions. But just from looking at this, I think for me, utilizing CSBA opposed to a different firm is that they are part of, or associated or affiliated with California School Boards Association, which, which is, you know, kind of the organization that provides districts with guidance, if you will. That's one of the reasons. In my experience in the last two years that I've been here, there's been some law firms that we've worked with that I, I've had conflict with, and I think some of us have in the way that, you know, things have unfolded. So for me, this organization would be less biased. It, it would kind of be like starting fresh. That's my perspective, that's where I'm coming in, in the approach that I'm taking, I'm in the reason why I support this. So I just wanted to make that clear as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savios, Vice President Tillman.
Perfect question. Does CSBA Legal do general counsel? And I don't, I didn't know they presented where they said last time they do general counsel, and that's why I'm making the point. I don't, I don't, I don't think they do from what I heard in the presentation. But, so that's the question we ought to, we ought to answer. And, and in terms of CSBA, I don't see CSBA as a robust organization. Some of you don't know this because you're new, but prior to Vernon Billy being CEO of CSBA, Vernon Billy got there because the previous CEO was accused of doing something with the money or something, and they went through a big upheaval at CSBA, and that's where Vernon Billy took over. He's only been there how many years? But they, they're not a real strong organization, and definitely not one where you would say you want to go to them for for legal services. I have no problem opening it up and looking at other law firms that provide general counsel. Like Mohammed came in and said, hey, here's this one that I used to use, and they're more responsive. The folks you guys got don't respond, we need to get some contracts done. You know, that makes sense. And even if you're talking about general counsel, let's look at law firms that provide general counsel to other school districts. I'm telling you, CSBA's not gonna be one. The, the, the fact that they charge two hundred dollars an hour does not make them, in my mind, seem like a better law firm, because the better law firms charge more money because they can.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Rizos Medina?
For me, I look at it, I think one of the pages says legal training, so I know there's Form seven-hundred. There's different types of questions that, or maybe just support that we want to get refreshed on and so forth. So for me, I look at this as more providing legal trainings, in-person legal trainings versus, you know, virtual trainings. So for me, that's what I was looking at, not necessarily for the robust or general counsel, although that would be nice, but I think, I do agree that maybe with general counsel, depending, I mean, the, getting suggestions or support from maybe organizations that have more in-depth experience. But I, I love the fact that we could use this as in-person legal training that would help us when we have annual forms that we have to fill out, what does this mean and so forth, just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Thank you, Ms. Rizos Medina. Ms. Chahuski?
I, I just wanted to make clear, I didn't see this as a, I, I didn't see this packet as something that would be general counsel. It didn't look robust enough for me to be a general counsel. I looked at this as something that would be a value added to the board and support for legal issues specific to us as a board. And when we want information, or maybe we disagree with, you know, an opinion, and we want to get our own opinion, you know, something that we could use in that way to make sure that we, like a second opinion, so that we have the, you know, the best, emotional best information to make a decision, at least in terms of that strict legal services piece. I just think there's a lot of other things in here. That's why I want to know, what's the subscription? What do we get with that subscription? And then, and then knowing that with that subscription, on top of that, we would have somebody that could give us a second opinion if we needed it.
Thank you, Ms. Chahuski. And I think it's ten percent of whatever our annual dues is, so that's the first part. Vice President Tillman?
Just for, just for background and historical information, there was a time when our district would use county counsel from San Antonio County. San Antonio County has a number of attorneys that they employ. They have a whole council, I mean, probably at least twenty lawyers. And we used to contract with them to come to our meetings and offer legal advice. And we would pay, we would reimburse them for their fees. Wouldn't be as expensive because it was county counsel from the county. And then, and it may be providing counsel for other districts, I'm not sure, but during that time, you had specific lawyers that worked for the county that worked with most, multiple districts, providing legal advice. So they had some expertise on school law. So just something to think about, too, is you could reach out to the county and say, can we enter into a MOU where we start using your counsel for district services again?
Thank you, Vice President Tillman, and I do know that we use them for college schools.
Oh, you do?
Yes, we do. And they're at all, every one of our meetings, so.
Exactly. So they have the expertise because they do it, and you wouldn't know who the lawyers are, right?
I don't know them personally, but I could find out.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you for a very good and robust discussion. Are we gonna agendaize this, I imagine? Is that what we have to do next? Go ahead, Ms. Savios, you may ask.
Oh, that, that was, that's what I was going to ask, if we can bring, because like I said, I think we all still kind of have a lot of questions.
We do.
If we can bring it back to, as an agendaized item.
That would be when consensus at the board?
Does, now, so what's the, what's the action gonna be? You want to bring it back to, to enter a contract with CSBA, or?
Yes.
For me, it's answering the question.
I think that would be with a lot more information before, no, agendaizing, it'd be many meetings from now, right?
So we're gonna agendaize again to get answers to the questions we brought up. Okay, that makes sense, okay.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to seven-point-two. We're doing pretty good there. Board will discuss options for the Footsteps to Freedom Tours. Ms. Cunningham, do I have that around? I do, right? All right, you should have a handout, folks, that is with you, as well as a calendar for upcoming meetings. And I think there was a lot of, well, I don't think there was a lot of discussion about Footsteps of Freedom Tour, which we all know and have heard. That's an amazing tour, and for those of you that have gotten to go, I believe, you know, the feedback I've gotten has been amazing, so. We noticed there are three tour dates available, as we see here, June twenty through twenty-seventh, fourth through eleventh, and eighteenth through twenty-fifth. Tours are eight days, Tuesday through Tuesday. That's quite a bit. Board meetings are held on the first and third Tuesdays. Our calendar dates have not been yet established for our next year. This year, Fourth of July falls on the first Tuesday, and it's a district holiday. I think it says right here before discussing dates, first question is, how many board members would want to go and could go this year? And then we would have to look at the date, which we choose, one meeting would be the third Tuesday, July eighteenth. So folks would be able to attend that meeting. So I guess we'll start with asking how many folks are interested in attending. All right, we have one, two, three. I'd say I'm interested, but I know I could never go because of my calendar, but, so it's really realistic.
I'd be interested, and I know I, I, you know, kind of already alluded that I would, the twentieth, but I didn't realize it was on the board meeting, and that it was gonna be for, I just didn't really calculate how many days. It's, it's,
I may either.
It's literally almost like eight days, so it, it may be a little difficult for me. But I did want to mention that, so I, there's, there's a conference that I'll be on, going July the eleventh, and then I also have a camping trip on the twenty-fifth, only because I expect it for a family. I know. I'd expect, I didn't expect board meetings to be on that, on those days, so if we do make those changes, I maybe have to do a teleconference, a teleconference, or do it another way.
So for the number, it looks like I have, Ms. Rizos Medina, you were interested, is that what you said? Okay. So it looks like we have three, possibly four, Ms. Cunningham, depending on the date. It would, the fourth would have been Ms. Rizos Medina, the three would be Ms. Chahuski, Ms. Savios, and then Ms. Alexander. All right, and so, you know, the other options are to discuss then, if the board chooses to have one meeting on the third Tuesday of July eighteenth. That would enable, you know, more folks to go, I believe. And then if we choose the dates for our board meetings, we may have to do, it looks like, according to what Ms. Cunningham has here, back-to-back, is that correct, Ms. Cunningham? If you want to maybe explain that a little bit, because I know you created this, so thank you.
Well, it really depends on how you guys decide to do the July meetings. If you want to do two meetings, it doesn't matter which two you ever choose, they're always gonna be back-to-back with another meeting. If you just do the one, the eighteenth would be the most logical, and if you do have four people who want to go, you, they could go on two different dates. They're still gonna miss the eighteenth because of how long that tour goes for. It's, it's, it really is kind of weird because it goes from Tuesday to Tuesday. So they're, they're gonna miss part of a meeting, you know, both ways.
We've had it where we've only had one meeting a month for July.
Yeah, we have had that in the past. Recently, we've always done the two, but with the holiday following, falling on there, the one would make more sense, and it'd be easier to go, even if you wanted to go on the June one, you could still go. It would just be, we would put you off as a conference, like if you were attending a conference, so it wouldn't be that you had to be here. Same with the other board members. So as long as you have a quorum.
Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Savios?
So the, the day that I was looking, because there's the three tours, was the last one, the July eighteenth one. So I just wanted to kind of share that as we, I don't know the other board members that are gonna be attending what, which, which tours they were planning to attend, which dates, but.
Dr. Wyatt, can I just say one more thing? I did put on the list that this tour usually is every year, sometimes maybe every other. You guys could always choose to send like two people every year, like do two this year, do two next year, you know, and so on, because most of you'll be here till twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-six, so you don't all have to go this year.
Then I'll decline, and then for this year, try to go next year.
Okay. Ms. Chahuski?
Say, the only tour date that I could do is the July eighteenth one. I have conflicts with the other two. Not on the board days, but on other days.
So the folks that want to attend, looks like you'd be going on the eighteenth, is that correct? Eighteenth through twenty-fifth? Ms. Alexander, how about you? You gonna work it out? All right, when that would mean, then we would keep our board meetings eleventh and twenty-fifth, is that correct? Or just the eleventh? I mean.
Would you say just do the eleventh?
All righty, just in an interest of time and conversation, is that, do we have consensus on that from the board?
Yes, I'm okay with that, but remember, I'll, I'll be in a conference, so I'll just have to do it through my computer.
J, I believe we still can, and we have. Okay, any other discussion?
Was there some discussion when that law ends where you can do virtual meetings?
This is not the same as COVID virtual. They came up with this new one, and I don't have the number off the top of my head, that you can do teleconferencing two different ways, either just cause or an emergency. Just cause, you're gonna do two a year. And the emergency, it just depends on what it is and how long you can do.
So you can do two a year?
If, for just cause, like if you've got to be off for, you know, kids sick or something like that.
Okay.
Have observed it as well, other boards, it, you know, it's still nice to have, and a lot of us do travel, so, thank you. All righty, so it sounds like Ms. Savios and Ms. Chahuski looking at the eighteenth through twenty-fifth, and possibly Ms. Alexander, and then our board meeting will be July eleventh. Yes? All right, folks, let's move on. All right, we'll move on to eight-point-oh, board policies, bylaws, discussion, first reading. Eight-point-one, revision to BP Board Policy sixty-twenty, parent involvement.
We pulled that one, Dr. Wyatt?
Oh, I'm sorry. Where did my list go? We pulled that one. Fantastic, even better. Let's move on to nine-point-oh, reports, comments, nine-point-one, board members. And we'll be starting with Ms. Savios, and then moving to her left, to Ms. Chahuski after that, and then back around, Ms. Alexander.
I'll just make my comments. I'll just make my comments brief tonight. I had a question about virtual comments. I had somebody ask me in general about whether or not they were required to identify themselves in making public comment, whether in person or virtually. And I thought that the response to that was no, they didn't have to identify themselves. So I don't know if that's accurate. I don't know if somebody can answer that for me.
I don't think that's quite accurate. If you read the bylaws, what it says is, if they come to a meeting, they don't have to sign in. But if they want to make a public comment, they do have to fill out a form to say, to give us their name, so we can call them forward. So the same would be for virtual. If they were going to do virtual, I would think they would still have to provide a name so that we could call them forward to speak.
I, I thought it could be anonymous. Like you could make an anon, even like, let's remove virtual out of the equation, just in general, I thought you're, you were not. And I have to go back, and I did read the law on this particular topic, which I don't have in front of me, but I thought it was optional to be able to like identify yourself, give your name, your address, your phone number, et cetera.
Well, I know we don't need a name, and we don't need an address or a phone number unless they want us to contact them. But I do believe you have to give a name because that's how we call you forward. I've never not called someone anonymous, please come forward.
But tonight, we had Jessica, we don't know if it was Jessica or Tony.
That's true. That's the only thing about virtual. There's nothing that says you have to show their face, but when they sign in, they have to give us a name so we know who we're calling. I mean, I can double check that, but I'm pretty sure that's how I read it before.
If you could, just because it was a question that was asked of me, and I just, I wanted to make sure that I asked the question on their behalf here. And so if we could just get an update on, you know, whether or not that's something possible. In addition to that, I, I do know that earlier today, there was a little incident, I did want to address it with Ms. Negretti in regards to her time ending. And although I agree that, you know, we should pause it at the five-minute mark, we just need to make sure that we're consistent. Because even though tonight, we, you know, our speakers were pretty consistent themselves, they stopped themselves when their five-minute mark came up. But there's been many, many times in different board meetings where that doesn't happen, and they go over. And it just, I want to make sure that we're doing that consistently to everybody and anybody that goes beyond that five-minute mark, just so that we're fair and we're consistent. Let's see, what else? I actually think that's pretty much it. Yep, that's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sevales, Ms. Chahuski?
Thank you. I just wanted to give some kudos out. I attended the Honor Orchestra and Honor Choir showcases, and the students and the teachers, the conductors were fabulous. I enjoyed every moment of it, and I was really excited, and the kids were excited as well. Kudos to the folks that put on the Literacy Day Fair at San Gregorio. It was so well-attended. There were so many people there. My only request is, when we have events like the Literacy Fair, or the, the same thing happened with the Black Honor Roll, a lot of us come at once, and there's actually, they could use us like throughout the day. And so it would be nice to know, like, who can go, and for us to like split up the day, so that they have a board member the entire time. But we don't know necessarily who's going, or we don't know that this is something that, hey, we're going to be giving awards all day, or there's two sessions, who can come in the morning, who can come in the afternoon, who could come to both. So it would be really helpful if we could work out a schedule for that. I went to the Arbita Career Fair yesterday, also very well-attended, kudos to Ms. Dapp and to Mr. Deep on that. The mayor was there, Mayor Tran was there. The big hit was our M and O group, and all of the kids playing with it. The funniest thing was one of the little girls hit the, the drill, and it buzzed, and she, she like jumped and screamed. It was, it was fabulous. She was, it was so cute. I attended the Safety and Attendance Committee yesterday. There was a really, also really well-attended by the county, the city, a lot of our partners. They gave some attendance data, and I wanted to give kudos to Musquee, Curtis, and San Bernardino High School, which were the three schools, they had the biggest drop in chronic attendance issues, so kudos to them. Also, the walk audits, they talked about the walk audits from Shandon Hills and Pacific, and the city and the county, there, there are plans moving forward for both of those to address the safety issues. So I'm really excited about that, and, and the plans for what they're doing going forward. While we're on the issue of safety, I just wanted to give kudos to our district safety team, Mr. Vatier, M and O, school police for, I know they were up all night when the, the big storms hit, monitoring our schools, monitoring the flooding, putting out sandbags and all of that. We don't think about sometimes about what, you know, what it takes to ensure that our, that our kids have safe schools the next day, you know, come Monday, that they don't walk into a flooded classroom. So they were up, I know there were, there were teams up all night and all weekend for all of that. And I also hope that we can do something for all of our, our folks that have been, are, you know, are still stuck in Snowmageddon. It is, it is really bad up there. You know, they've lost two grocery stores, the post office, the credit union. I have a friend who lost her business, the roof collapsed, the hardware store, so they can't even go get what they need. So it is, it is unprecedented, and it's going to change the landscape of our mountains significantly. The two last things, I'm hoping that we can have some follow-up on the parent and teacher concerns that we heard from a variety of places today, and, and make sure we get some follow-up on that, whatever the, whatever the process or procedure that has to happen. I hope we do that. And, and then I would like to end with a thank you to Ginger. You know, I, I had the great fortune of being able to work with you on community engagement when we were doing the Community Engagement and Community Engagement two point O. And I appreciate, you know, all that you have done for us, and, and for our families, and for making hope happen and everything in our district. And I wish you, wish you well. And just wanted to say thank you for your service. You will be missed.
Thank you, Ms. Chahuski, Ms. Alexander.
Thank you. So good evening. I also had the opportunity to attend the Honors Choir event with some of the other board members. So it was really nice. I thought that the kids did an excellent job. We had opportunity to see all the way from middle school, well, no, I'm sorry, elementary, middle school, and high school, and they were just awesome, just very talented. And I, I just felt like, you know, we have that talent, and it's good to showcase it. So I was, I felt blessed to be there, and it was a great event. So thank you to our Assistant Superintendents, who I know that you're always circulating around and attending those events, and it was just good to be there. I have an announcement related to that Dr. Gwendalde actually sent out an email announcing that they're going to relaunch the Dr. Margaret Hill Mom Mob, and it's going to be on March seventeenth, and it will be at Warm Springs Elementary. So I hope that we all can be out there, be from eight to eight-ten. So I've never had the pleasure of attending, so I'm super excited because I've always been able to watch. But I, I will be out there, and I hope that we're all there, too. So make sure you write that down. Sorry to the men, but, you know, you guys can do yours, too. And then I want to say thank you to Ginger, even though I didn't really have an opportunity to really work with you that much. I did have an opportunity to meet you earlier this year, when I was, I reached out to the district, and I, I know that you work really hard, and have worked really hard on behalf of the district, and the time that I have been a board member, which you're, which you've extended to me, as well as your staff, has been excellent. So thank you for the support, and I wish you all the best of luck. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Ozmedina?
Oh, definitely. Thank you for, for bringing that up, because it was many years ago that Dr. Hill started that up, and, and that would be great for them to continue in the school district. I did want to, I didn't know where to address this, so I'm just going to go ahead and address this here. I know that during COVID time, due to cleanliness and so forth, teachers had microwaves in their classrooms to heat up the food, because going in from one place to another, that way they could just have their food there, and then work around that kind of environment. Now that, I think, I believe that there was an email sent out saying that they would have to remove all microwaves from their classroom. And I'm curious to find out, how many, during lunchtime, how many microwaves, or how accessible are lunchtimes for all the staff and teachers at the school sites? And making sure that we're looking at how we're accommodating. If there's only one microwave for the whole school site, and they only have a few minutes in between to try to heat up their food, and then having that, other teachers doing the same thing, I'm wondering how effective will it be if we were to remove all the microwaves from the classroom? And I, from my understanding, the teachers have them in specific areas, so it's not necessarily out in the open. So if you can give me an update on that, and why the recommendations and so forth, that they're asking for those removal, and then what are the alternatives? If, if the lunchrooms only have one, and you have, you know, a lot of staff members during that time accessing that one, you know, how, how realistic, you know, we're providing teachers or staff members that opportunity? And that's basically, also, congra, well, not congratulations, but I know that you're going to be doing great things as well when you leave the school district. But thank you so much for all your services and your support in our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ozmedina. Ms. Avila-Grande?
Okay, I too want to just mention what a great event was the Literacy Fair. It was very exciting, and it really meant something, especially to me. I was there as a teacher, as Mama Magica, my alter ego when I do puppets, and I had an interactive puppet show, and I had some parents come up afterwards telling me how proud they were. Their autistic children really liked doing that, and that's exactly why I got interested in, to begin with, is to see their reactions. And then the Career Day, oh my goodness, it was just so wonderful watching Helen Tran, she was giving her elevator speech to little small children, and it's the exact same one she gives to big people, you know, get out there and don't forget to vote for me, and, you know, you're going to do this, and, and I'm going to do this with the city, and I'm going to end homelessness. Everybody's going like, what, what's that? But she was great. It was really exciting. And the M and O van was like the star of the show, and the kids wanted to get in there so bad. And I, I told them, I said, how come we can't give a tour to them? He goes, I wish we could, because in there, it looks just like a hardware store. He goes, but the problem is that we don't have a ramp. We'd have to have a special ramp. And I said, well, give us a presentation, come on down and show us how safe it would be, you know? So he says, okay, I will. I said, so I just want to know, I'm farming everybody out here, more work. But on my, my special note, is I was really excited to be at the, what was that, Sandra, Dr. Student Beha, Student Behavioral Health Incentive Program, the SBHIP. And we did mention it on our What Happened Last Week, but I just want to tell you how amazed I was at that program. And I think, I asked Karen to, to print some out. Okay, all right. So, all right, so we, we got it digitally, but I really wanted you to have a hard copy of it, and I did ask Karen to give it to you. Because the information, there's so much information on there, and it, and it began with, it was engendered, an idea engendered by a forensic pediatrician, correct? And she just felt that there should be a better way, because her story, she told us, you know, first we learned all the information, this four-point-four billion dollar initiative, four-point-four, almost five billion dollars. And what she did is just miraculous. And what started it all was, she told us what she did. As a forensic pediatrician, she had to figure out, when she had children who were injured, how they got injured. And because many times it was a parent or someone in the home that did it. And she tells the story of a three-month-old baby that she helped heal her. She had a, a head injury given by someone who was in the home, sounded like the father. He went to prison. She never saw that child again until three years later, they brought this child in, and, and she died. And she was horrified when she learned it was a child that she had healed when she was three months old. And then once they leave the door, they completely lost contact. And she said, how often does this happen? We had, there had to be a better way, those gaps. So she started this incentive, I don't, it was just incredible, where she, they closed the gaps between the schools, she got all the county, county schools interested, with the IHP and the Molina, all the, the medical care, along with the schools, and, and they closed the gap. And Loma Linda University Children's Hospital started it all. So she's built this big web of safety. So then once the child comes into their hospital, and they, they help them, they follow that child for the rest of their life practically. And she had, she even, I think, adopted one, Sandra? And she adopted one child, and she showed pictures of the child, this child was like eighteen and twenty-two. And that, that gaps are closing. And so you talk about the whole child from, from the time they found that the child was in need, until, until that child was successful and grown. And it just, and just, it was just amazing. So go ahead and look at the paperwork, and every, they've split up, all the counties have split up the elements and the areas that they're going to, they're going to concentrate on. And we're in there, too. So I'm very proud of that, very excited to know that. So that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Vice President Tillman, no comment. Thank you very much. And I will go on to mine, and some have been already stated, and I'll probably just go to those quickly. Just a number of congratulations for those of you that did not know, our San Gregorio High School Men's Varsity Division Six Soccer Team won the CIF and state championship. So wow, that is a huge, huge, huge accomplishment. Great job to them. I know I was invited a couple of times, and it got canceled a couple of times, and I imagine they're playing out there in almost near freezing conditions. So that made it even better to win in such very challenging conditions. And as we heard already, congratulations to our students, staff, and their families during the Honor Band, Honor Orchestra, and Honor Choir. You know, kids just continue to amaze us on every level. Tons, tons to watch. I, I mean, I love going to those. I'll be honest with you, I really love going to those. So great job to everyone involved, staff as well. Amazing job to our Cajon High School cheer, who won the National Cheer Championship this year. I think it's the second time in not too many years. So they got something special going on over there with Cajon Cheer. So keep up the amazing work to our cowgirls over there at Cajon. And then off to Indian Springs High School, the Coyote Cheer Squad for taking first place in their division recently at the Universal Studios Competition. So great, great job to them as well. A lot of amazing accomplishments. You know, just to build on Ms. Sevales's public comments time, you know, oftentimes does get extended by our questions and our comments. Now, I would recommend we refrain from any type of discussion or discourse when it comes to public comments. I know that's difficult to do sometimes, especially when it's students. I know we really get excited when our students come up to speak, but that's something that, you know, when we talk about CSBA and training, I know that would be something that they would definitely talk to us about, is not engaging the public during public comments, because that does happen. And when we do that, it does extend comments for quite a long time. So just please keep that in mind. And then tonight, I'm asking then our board meeting tonight with a moment of silence for King Middle School Vice Principal Kirk Fraser, who just recently passed. And it's always difficult when we hear of a young person, he's pretty young, a couple of young children passing away. And so if we could do that, I greatly appreciate it. And then I will pass this on, I think, to Ms. Antiveros at this time, right? Is it Ms. Antiveros or AIC? Which one are we doing? We're going to do AIC, okay.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. And luckily, you guys have said so many things already that we are celebrating, so I'll be brief. So I just wanted to thank our president, Dr. Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, our board members, and my fellow cabinet members. It really is an honor to begin this, this history month, our Women's Histories Month, that the administrator in charge. So thank you for the opportunity. I've been truly humbled to lead the district with my colleagues, so we thank you for that. So let's dive in. So Literacy Day Festival, you've mentioned quite a bit. I just wanted to add there that that was led by Ms. Coker in Elementary Instruction and her team, and it was an interdivisional effort. So we had several departments there. And then for Women's History Month, we're going to be celebrating March as Women's History, Women's History Month. This month is a time dedicated to recognizing and encouraging the celebration of women, and the many, many notable contributions women have made throughout history. Each week, our social media platforms will be paying homage to diverse pioneering women who have shaped the course of history around the nation and the world, like Mexican painter Frida Kahlo and Sacagawea, the Shoshone woman who was a guide, interpreter, and diplomat for the Lewis and Clark Expedition. The Honor Orchestra Band Choir were also mentioned. The performances at the California Theater was, were phenomenal, so proud of all of our students there. And wanted to give a shout out to our music teachers. They are phenomenal, and they did a great job with our students. We also want to congratulate our Communications Department. We also want to congratulate our Communications Department for the Kelsbra Excellence Award. Under the leadership of Chief Communications Officer Ginger Ontiveros, they earned a statewide recognition last week by bringing home top honors for the district's Welcome to My Kindergarten Family Marketing Campaign. We're very proud of that. The department won a prestigious Excellence in Communications Award, which recognizes superior achievement in meeting strategic goals through high-quality communications and public relations initiatives. The district's award-winning marketing campaign was recognized for the creative ways it appeals to families with kinder-age children, compelling more than 450 families to enroll their children in kindergarten and SBCUSD schools. Kelsbra is a statewide organization that promotes better public understanding, commitment to and support for public education. So thank you for that. We also have the Suchi Foundation is offering a free medical clinic on Sunday, March 12th, from 9 to 2 at Indian Springs High School. Appointments are recommended but not required. Availability is limited and no insurance is required. We would just want to remind our families that they services available will be medical, dental, vision, acupuncture and prescriptions. And also for COVID during spring break, we deeply care about the well-being of our students and families. So as a courtesy, our district will be distributing over the county COVID tests for all students ahead of spring break so they can have those. We want our families to have these tests when they're traveling or visiting family and we urge families to please save at least one test so they can test their child on April 1st or April 2nd. We continue reminding families that if your child tests positive for COVID, please keep your child home and report the absence to the school right away so they can provide assistance and resources for your families. So I know many of you have have already come to our We Built This City Tour. We're visiting different schools with all the wonderful facilities improvements that are going on. So we hope to see you at the next stop in the We Built This City Tour, coming to Indian Springs on Thursday, March 9th, where we will be holding a ribbon-cutting ceremony at 10:30 for the school's manufacturing career technical education center. This $5.8 million project includes a state-of-the-art career technology education facility, giving students a head start on a range of well-paying manufacturing careers. The high school cheer awards were already mentioned, so again, kudos to Cajon and Indian Springs for their cheer squads. I know that Urbide Elementary was also mentioned already for their successful career days. So kudos to them as well and their staff. And Dr. Wyatt beat me to the punch on the high school soccer championship. So that's fantastic. And we congratulate San Gregorio again for their victory. That's fantastic. And I lastly wanted to also thank Ms. Ginger Ontiveros. This is her last board meeting, so I wanted, on behalf of my colleagues as well, Dr. Rodriguez and Dr. Funchess, on behalf of the board, Ms. Ontiveros, thank you for everything. Thank you for all your service. We've appreciated everything that you've done for our district. Best of luck to you. We wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Applegate. I believe we were going to have Ms. Ontiveros have some comments, so.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Wyatt, Board Cabinet. I just really want to let you know what an honor it's been for me to serve first with my cabinet peers. I mean, every one of them is a high-caliber leader who is just so dedicated to doing what's best for our students. And their brilliance inspires me to do my best every day. I've, I will always cherish the opportunity to have led the amazing teams that I have in communications and community engagement. I mean, they go above and beyond all the time to make sure that our families are informed, that our district brand is trusted and that our students have opportunities and supports that they need. And I'm really proud over the last seven years of having been able to work with individuals who built our Making Hope Happen Foundation, to have created some really innovative partnerships to support students and to have brought in tens of millions of dollars through our grant writing efforts to support expanded services for our students. One of the things I really want to thank you for is for making me a better person because coming here to this district, I have learned so much and been so impacted by the people that I have met here in San Bernardino City. The directors who work in our district office, the principals who lead our schools, teachers, parents and students and each of you as well. So I am changed by this experience and I'm going to carry those gifts with me for the rest of my life. So thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to write such a beautiful chapter of my professional career. I just want you to know it's a little bittersweet leaving. I will miss you all and I admit I will even miss you at least for a while at midnight on Tuesdays. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ontiveros, and congratulations. I do believe, though, we we have a reception for you coming up. Is that correct? Celebration reception?
There are people conspiring to do that next Monday.
Is that when they're conspiring to do it next Monday? All right. So for those of us, hopefully we could attend that and, you know, even give our appreciation more in person to say thank you to Ms. Ontiveros for all the amazing things she's done for our district and wearing multiple, multiple hats, I will say that, which has been a huge challenge. So thank you again, Ms. Ontiveros. We're going to move on to 10.1, Approval Personnel Report, number four, dated March 7, 2023, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions and terminations.
Moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? The personnel report? Personnel?
Did he do as presented?
One jumped out in front of me, but that's okay. As presented. Boy, we did, that was quick. So it's been moved and properly second. Again, thank you, Dr. Funchess, and pardon us as well. Any discussion? Ms. Grande, you had your light on?
I did, but it was from before, so it's not for this issue, it was something else I forgot to say.
Let us, let's vote this and we'll give you a second after that. So let's go ahead and vote. Had a little bet we'd get out here by 10:40, but it's going to be close. I don't think we're going to do that.
I think we can still do that.
I think we can. All right, motion carries. Move on to 10.2. Resolution to approve entering into service of additional student transportation providers?
Moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? I would say yes, absolutely. Let's get it done. To all the folks that have been out there, see, we're working on it. We're going to have it done. Mr. Mohammed over there is getting it done for us. So thank you and to our transportation folks. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 11, gosh darn, I went too far down. 11.0 Consent Items, 11.1 Approval Consent Items Agenda.
Moved.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion or items to be pulled? I need to pull 11.36 and recuse myself since I am a board member for Young Visionaries. Any other items? All right, motion carries. I'll go ahead and remove myself, 11.36, and then turn this over to Vice President Tillman. 11.36.
Moved.
Thank you. Will someone get President Wyatt, please? Thank you.
Can you move?
12.1 Staff Review Items Updates Requested.
Well, one last time, board. So, see now, I'm going to tear up. I can't believe that. Okay, so this evening first, Abigail Rosales Medina asked that we would consider updating and reaffirming the district's 2017 Safe Zone Resolution. There were then several requests related to the Young Women's Empowerment. Ms. Miki Chahusky and Ms. Myra Sabios both asked that we would reach out to invite them to submit a proposal for the CAPS program. Myra Sabios then asked also that we would share information about other young women's clubs that may exist in the district. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked that we would provide some information to the board about why they were not included in or their program was not included this year. And Ms. Myra Sabios asked that we would consider providing students with any recognition that their participation in the Young Women's Empowerment Program would have earned them had it been available to them this year. Ms. Myra Sabios and Ms. Miki Chahusky asked that you would provide some additional information about what services CSBA legal services would provide as part of the subscription and what would be billed separately. Ms. Felicia Alexander and Dr. Scott Wyatt asked that we would obtain a list of references for other school districts that are providing, that CSBA is providing legal services to. Ms. Myra Sabios and Mr. Danny Tillman kind of combined to ask that we would provide an explanation of what a general counsel does for the district and does CSBA actually provide that service. Ms. Myra Sabios asked that we would research rules about whether individuals who make virtual comments are required to identify themselves. Ms. Myra Sabios asked that we would ensure consistency in the time allocated to public commenters. Ms. Miki Chahusky asked that we would consider scheduling shifts for long events to ensure that the board is represented throughout the day at those events. Ms. Miki Chahusky asked that we would follow up on the parent concerns that were expressed during public comment earlier in the evening. And Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked that we provide information about how accessible microwaves are for teachers and staff during the lunchtimes and maybe why they are not also allowed to have them in their classrooms. And those were all of them that I captured. Hopefully, I didn't miss any.
Thank you, Ms. Ontiveros. Were there any other items that were not captured?
I just wanted to go back and just revisit the Young Women, Young Women Empowerment because there was one comment that I made regarding the young lady, Ajane, who says she's graduating. And I was asking that we could reconsider whatever possible related to not waiting to have them submit an application or RFP in April. Is there something we can do now?
I'll incorporate that in so we can follow up on that.
Ms. Chahusky.
That was a question I asked too because the motion was actually tabled. It wasn't voted down. So the vote, you know, to reconsider and bring it off the table should be in order. So that was what I was asking, but I wasn't sure in this forum how that happens. So that's what I was trying to ask earlier.
I imagine we'll get clarity on that as soon as possible. Thank you. All right, folks.
President Wyatt, I did have something to say. I I just wanted to share with the with the cabinet and the board members that Felicia is this next coming years, she's the new president for the Assistance League, right? Yes, correct. And I've been in and out of Assistance Leagues for years. I just skate away from all my duties as volunteer because I just was a teacher. I was really too, too busy. And and I knew as soon as I retired that I would get a little, become more active. And this is the first time I've ever taken on a position that she talked me into with her sweetness and delightful mind and I just couldn't resist. So I will be the Operation School Bell Chairperson this year. And so I'm looking forward to working with her in that capacity, make her help, help and make her look really good. I just want to share.
Moved.
All right, thank you, Ms. Grande. And I didn't say we would end our school board meeting with a moment of silence for King Middle School Vice Principal, Mr. Fraser. So I'd ask us to take a moment of silence, please. All right, thank you very much.
Vote to adjourn?
Moved.
It's been moved properly second. Let's adjourn. Everyone, have a great evening. Drive safe. And as always, may God bless you as you journey home.